Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council for Wednesday, November 12, 2025. I now call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father God, we ask for your wisdom. We ask that you help us to lead with principled thought rather than personal animus, that you be with the people of our county through times that are difficult for some, to give them strength and courage. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
[inaudible]
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 14, 2025, public hearing?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. The minutes of the October 14, 2024, public hearing have been approved. Are there any other petitions, communications, or miscellaneous matters? Seeing none, we have no board appointments this month. We move on to the county auditor's report.
No report.
Thank you. County Commissioners? I do not see a Commissioner. There must be no report. No council special committees. Next, our first readings. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 87-25?
Bill Number 87-25, an ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council, adopting the provisions of Indiana Code Section 6-11-46, petitioner Brian Tanner.
Bill Number 87-25 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee. We move on to resolutions. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 88-25?
Bill Number 89-25?
I'm sorry, 89-25?
Bill Number 89-25, a resolution regarding the future of Portage Manor, petitioner Joseph G. Thomas.
And I apologize for that, I just got the wrong number down there. Petitioner?
Thank you. Joe Thomas, County Council, District A. I have a resolution regarding the future of Portage Manor, whereas the Portage Manor is historically meaningful to the people of St. Joseph County, dating back to the early 1900s, and serving as a home for the elderly and for those in need of care, whereas the grounds around it also have a rich history, dating back to Native Americans and early French explorers, whereas the land offers ecological diversity and is the center point of beauty in South Bend's urban environment, whereas St. Joseph County values its history and should consider viable opportunities to preserve the Portage Manor site for generations to come, lest it go to ruin, whereas projects like this can be cost prohibitive for local governments and private partnerships can enable landmark preservation that may not otherwise happen, whereas St. Thomas Moore Academy, a local school, wants to restore Portage Manor using their own funding, whereas local ecologist Steve Sasse wants to preserve part of the surrounding land for public enjoyment, whereas such a proposal will allow our community to reopen Portage Manor, keep it from being shuttered or destroyed, educate our county's children, provide opportunities for St. Joseph County citizens to be more engaged with the property through nature and preserve our local history, whereas county commissioners should be encouraged to consider this proposal, in particular, as well as any other public proposals to protect Portage Manor's longevity in St. Joseph County. Now therefore be it resolved that the county council recommends the commissioners bringing forward this proposal and any others, and decide whether such plans are feasible for St. Joseph's County Portage Manor property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Are there any questions from council for the petitioner? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 89-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Oh, I'm sorry. Please come up. State your name and address for the record, please, and please sign in once you're finished.
Okay. Thank you. Deborah Doral, 21677 Norton Road, South Bend. I don't have a lot to say. There is a lot more information that we need on this, except that I am overwhelmingly in favor of what we have heard so far and the effort to preserve both the building and the land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kevin Connery, 51291 Hidden Pines Court. I too am in favor of looking at selling the land to the school. Been up here before when they were getting ready to close the place, fought like hell for them not to close it. I think with the proposal that's on the table with St. Thomas to come in and preserve the building, it is a historic landmark. I think it's great that we have somebody that's interested in it. My suggestion would be that we sell it to them for a dollar and we hold on the land. We own the land. The county owns the land. If they defunct after 10 years or whatever, whatever happens, the county still owns the land. I think it's a great opportunity. It gets the taxpayers out from underneath, paying the taxes, keeping the upkeep on the place, what's going on with the security that's going on. The place has been broken into eight or nine different times in the last several months, and I know initially when they closed it, we had around-the-clock security there, and now it's just sitting. So I too am in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connery.
Good evening, Council. Dan Caruso, New Carlisle. I also don't have a lot to say. Actually, I was going to say exactly what Kevin said, like he read my notes. This needs to, this is great that somebody has come forward and wants to save Portage Manor, to put a school in there, put a school grounds around the area, possibly some FFA stuff, teaching the kids how to support themselves with crops and make those classes included in schooling there, 130, I think 130-some acres. They could do a lot with that, and a school use would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso.
Good evening. Kevin Powers, 1616 Sunnymead. I am the head of school at St. Thomas Moore. Just want to thank you for bringing forward this resolution, let you know fully support of this resolution. The school would be very happy to be there, and thank you for considering this.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Good evening. Jan Savelli Granger. I speak in support of the resolution. I want to underscore, however, the portion that indicates commissioners should be encouraged to consider this proposal in particular, and this is the underscored part, as well as other public proposals. I encourage the commission and council to pursue an open and transparent call for proposals and conduct a selection process that helps to heal the wounds caused by the county's decision to close Portage Manor. And as you know, the residents, their families, and friends, and many others in this community were harmed by this decision. Such a process and its ultimate outcome offer a constructive opportunity for the county to heal some of those wounds and to build greater credibility and trust within the community. The county could realize such an outcome through the establishment of a special commission comprised of respected community members, family members and friends, as well as other county officials. The commission will be charged with the development of requirements and selection criteria for all proposals and which would be used to evaluate and select a finalist. And I want to thank Counselor Joe for encouraging this effort to preserve a special place.
Thank you, Dr. Savelli.
Good evening. My name is Tom St. George. I live at 310 West Navarre Street in South Bend. I just wanted to simply say that I'm also in favor of this, and that the plan with the school's preservation of the Portage Manor building, along with some ecological development, that would also be open to citizens of St. Joseph County, seems like a win-win proposition to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St. George.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Krieger, 15678 Winding Brook Drive in Mishawaka. I want to speak in support of the plan. My family's been living in this area for five generations and has enjoyed both the rich history of our city and the wonderful parks that we have, and anything that we can do to create a win-win that both preserves our history and allows us to have wonderful natural spaces that we can enjoy with our families and our friends, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Ms. Wolf?
Charlotte Wolf, 21439 Osborne Road, Lakeville, 46536. And I am very much in favor of a commission to consider proposals as a practicing ecologist and director of Prairie Winds Nature Farm. I have seen the benefits of taking a piece of property like this one and doing ecological restoration, community gardening, and parkland on such a nice piece of property that could benefit the entire community. And I think that proposals should be considered as a group so that the best of all proposals could be considered. I'm also in favor of Thomas Moore School. I know some of the people that go to Thomas Moore School, and they're good people, and I think that they will take good care of the building. I don't know whether they should be charged for the building or not, but I agree with the idea of the school owning the building, but the community having a say in the land around the building, perhaps maybe just acre right around the building could be in their control. But again, consider all of that in a special commission that would be interested citizens, and I would certainly be delighted to be part of that commission, and I know some other folks that have been talking about this for many months that would be happy to be on the commission and help guide the future of the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Mary?
Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlisle. I am also in favor of this. I believe the school would be a great fit for this property. I like the idea of the land being somewhat county-owned, but with that being owned also comes a responsibility, and the responsibility of keeping children safe at the school. But, so I don't know what the answer is, but I do like the idea of that, and I like the idea of a school being there and bringing life back to the building and serving a purpose. It's such a beautiful building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Countryman. Mr. Rolphas?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Very much in favor of the proposal for St. Thomas Moore School. Mark Rolphas, 1122 Quigley Place, South Bend, Indiana. I think it would be a great use for the building. The building's been sitting there for three years. That's long enough for it to sit, so there's no reason not to move on this because it's been sitting there long enough. So I think that school would be a great use of the property and to advance educational needs in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rolphas. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike McManus, 51940 Lillak Road. I'm not against any particular group or for any particular group buying the building, renting the building, but it seems strange that once again we're making a major decision that hasn't been thoroughly vetted. I miss, I think Ms. Savelli's suggestion about a commission is appropriate. You, not you all, but the former council threw out the lifelong residence of Portage Manor, saying it was too expensive to keep it up, and now we're just going to give it away? I think that's wholly inappropriate. There should be an open disclosure, open bidding process, so that this public piece of property, either the land and the building or separately, are appropriately appraised and sold at fair market value. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 89-25. Is there any further comment by any council members?
I would like to make it.
Councilwoman Hess.
All right. I agree with the proposed use of the property as far as having educational resources, having it turned in on ecological, environmental land that could be used for educational purposes. I think there's some valid points there, but like Professor Savelli and some others said, I think we need an open bidding process, that we shouldn't let it go to one entity. Again, somebody mentioned that somebody would be paying taxes. Well, a private school wouldn't be paying any taxes, so that wouldn't happen, but I would prefer to see if there's going to be a concept like that, maybe a collaboration of all the public school systems in the county, of the parks, of the South Bend Parks, the Mishawaka Parks, the county parks, some kind of, and other scientists and so forth that could really, maybe Notre Dame, other people that could help study this and make it more open for public use. That would be my preference, but again, having a commission to entertain other proposals to how this could best be utilized to serve all of the people in St. Joseph County, I would like to see. So I won't be supporting it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hess. Councilman Tanner?
Thank you, President Shetzel. I'm not necessarily in favor of the entity that's mentioned here, not anything against Thomas Moore. I don't know enough to make a decision or a determination about the academy as a whole, but much to the point of Ms. Savelli and Mr. McManus, I think the disposal of public property should go through a public auction, a negotiated sale, a sealed bid process, or some other RFP. All that said, the spirit and intent of this resolution is to preserve the property. It's to preserve the building, it's to preserve the land. I think that whatever is ultimately done should have either a 100-year land lease that reverts back to the county, or ownership transfer that reverts back to the county, conservation easements on the land that ensures public access, and things of that nature. I would love to see that if the commissioners entertain this, that some consideration or contingency that the building receive a local landmark is a part of that, because it's currently a national landmarked facility which provides no protections. That's a recognition and an opportunity to gain funding, but it does not protect the building itself, and it's been recommended for local landmark status, and it hasn't received it up to this point. I'd love to see all of those things. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I appreciate the effort that Steve Sasse has put into this. I think it goes without saying that Mr. Dieter has been a strong proponent of preserving this land and the building itself, and has been a part of some of the effort to find other options there. All that said, I'll vote in favor of it, so long as, A, this is a non-binding resolution. It doesn't guarantee anything as an outcome, but B, I support the spirit of it, which is the preservation of the building and the land.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tanner. Any other comments? Mr. Katanzerite?
Mr. President, thank you. Much like my colleagues, Ms. Hess and Mr. Tanner, and some concerns were raised tonight by Mr. McManus and others, and I've gotten a few emails with concerns mentioned. I personally couldn't attend the November 4 presentation. I had a conflict. I was notified by email on November 2 at 8:00 PM of the upcoming meeting, and I couldn't change my plans to attend that. I would like to have been there to hear the proposal or to see it, and there was a conflict. But I like the idea of a process more than just, let's settle in on the first person we get that's interested in the property, and again, I appreciate the work of environmentalists like Steve Sasse, who look at things like that, and has, who has assessed the property environmentally and made some recommendations. And I would recommend, much like the process the county commissioners had when they reviewed Dr. Attala's proposal for Portage Manor to keep it open, I think them, since they are the landlords of all the county property, I think they should have a process much like that, where you vet whoever wishes to bid on Portage Manor, who's going to be the custodian of Portage Manor, a vetting process that truly looks at what the potential of the person or organization is that can take over Portage Manor and do it justice, preserve it properly, has the financial wherewithal and ability to sustain a plan that can keep the facility and property up to the standard that we would like to see it kept up to. So I too have some concerns. I would have liked to have been there on the 4th, but again, the short notice of the meeting didn't provide for that. That's why, at this point in time, I would have a problem with supporting the resolution as it's currently written. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Any further comments from council? Mr. Thomas, is that a hand up?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure. All right. All right. Seeing none, may I have a motion on Bill Number 89-25?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
All right. Motion to approve by Councilman Figg, seconded by Councilman Breton. All right. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
No.
Mr. Katanzerite?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Figg?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
No.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes. Yes.
Bill passes 6-3.
Let the record show that Bill Number 89-25 was passed by a vote of 6 to 3. Next, our salary amendments. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 85-25?
Bill Number 85-25, an ordinance amending ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, prosecutor.
Thank you. Committee report, Councilwoman Hess.
Mr. Shetzel, Bill Number 85-25 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Petitioner? Who is our petitioner on this one?
It's usually Mr. Eisenhofer.
Yeah. Mr. Eisenhofer is not here.
Usually he's here.
He is not here, but if you don't mind, just looking at this, refreshing my memory, this is just a salary ordinance for the IPAC grant that they received. This is a part-time employee of $5,703.75, and this is, they have received this grant in the past, so they are just asking for the appropriation of this, and Notre Dame has reimbursed this amount.
Okay. All right. Any questions from council?
So is the auditor's office speaking? Has a petitioner on this?
Yes, the auditor's office can speak for the petitioner if they happen to be absent, but the council can make that call if they do not wish to move forward if the petitioner is not present, if I understand that correctly.
Yeah, works for me. Thank you.
Any other council comments or questions?
Mr. Shetzel?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Keeping with what we've done in the past, I think we probably should return it to committee unless there's movement to not do so.
Are you making the motion to return it to committee, Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second to that motion?
The petitioner wasn't present, that was our, it's kind of how we've done that in the past.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Are there any other council comments? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 85-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Make sure this time. Okay. Anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on Bill Number 85-25. Any further comments from council members? Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to make a quick note that I think that Mr. Katanzerite's motion was very valid and justified, given our practice of giving petitioners an opportunity to speak during a public hearing, but the very nature of this being a budget acceptance of grant funds that the auditor's office presented, as well as something that's been presented to us during committee, I felt comfortable moving forward with that tonight. Thanks.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move for approval by Councilwoman Hess, seconded by Councilman Thomas. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
No.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Figg?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Bill passes 8-1.
Let the record show that Bill Number 85-25 was passed by a vote of 8 to 1. Clerk, would you please read Bill Number 86-25?
Bill Number 86-25, an ordinance amending ordinance 76-24, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the numbers of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2025. Petitioner, probate court.
Committee report, please, Councilwoman Hess.
Mr. Shetzel, the Bill Number 86-25 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Laura Zapia, Judge of the Probate Court and Juvenile Justice Center, 1,000 South Michigan Street. We have two items which Mr. James Masters will present.
Good evening. James A. Masters, NIMTHVENE Masters in Campiti, 350 Columbia Street here in downtown South Bend. My privilege to address you on behalf of Judge Zapia this evening. Probate Court is requesting council approval to use two sources of funding to pay one employee in two different cases. The first is for a juvenile referee currently funded at $78,000 per year for two and a half to three days per week to hear 4D cases. These are cases for recovery of funds that, when the Medicaid has paid out child support, and then there's a recovery back from the obligated parent. Court wants to increase the time of that referee by two days for a total cost of an additional $24,000. If you do the math, that's getting two days for less than the cost of one day, and the purpose would be for that referee to pick up other cases that are not 4D. These would be like chin's cases, children in need of services, or other juvenile cases. So there's a certain efficiency by having one person working five days a week at that level. These funds that we're asking you to use have already been approved, they've already been appropriated, they're not being paid out currently because there's a vacant referee position, as well as a vacant position for a senior advisor to the court. And so we're here only because the funding requirements are that when you're paying one employee out of two sources, the council has to approve it. There's no increase in an appropriation here, it's just approval of using two different sources of funds to pay one person. The second request is for also a juvenile referee currently funded at $78,000 a year for two and a half to three days a week, and the court wants to increase that person's time by an additional two days of the week to serve as a senior advisor on legal matters for the court, and also to hear other cases, and the increased compensation would be $20,000 for those additional two days. Again, two days for less than the cost of one day currently. That senior advisor position is not filled, so the funding source is already there, it's already been. already been approved, it's already been appropriated. Neither employee has started doing any work, uh, and they're not being paid any additional amounts, pending the council's approval as required. This is, I guess to use the phrase, revenue neutral. We're not asking the council to appropriate any additional money or to increase the funding overall, but merely to allow the use of two different sources of funds to pay these employees. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to try to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? Mr. Katanzerite.
President Shetzel. Judge, just to confirm, um, for the first judicial referee and the additional salary, there leaves a remainder of thirty-eight thousand dollars, um, under the probate court referee. Is that position going to be filled?
That'll be vacant.
That'll remain vacant?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And on the second position, um, the senior advisor remaining dollars is fifty-eight thousand five eighty-four. Will that position be filled?
That'll be vacant also.
Okay. Thank you. Answers my question.
All right. Any other counsel questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill number eighty-six dash twenty-five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number eighty-six dash twenty-five. Are there any further comments from council members? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Councilwoman Hess, I'm sorry, Councilman Fig and Councilwoman Hess. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Bill passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill eighty-six dash twenty-five was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next is public hearing, public comments on fiscal matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill number eighty-four dash twenty-five?
Bill number eighty-four dash twenty-five, an ordinance appropriating and transferring monies for the purpose herein specified for the several departments herein listed of Saint Joseph County government.
Thank you. Because all fiscal matters were heard and discussed by the council at its October 2025 committee meeting, we will move directly to public comment on Bill number eighty-four dash twenty-five. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Bill number eighty-four dash twenty-five. Any further comment by any council members? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion to pass. Mr. Katanzerite, seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Bill passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number eighty-four dash twenty-five was passed by a vote of nine to zero. We now move on to miscellaneous matters. Clerk, will you please read Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-five?
Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title eleven Business Regulations Chapter one thirteen Massage Establishments Massage Therapists of the Saint Joseph County Code, which shall be known and amended as the Saint Joseph County Massage Establishments Therapy Ordinance. Petitioners, Health Department.
Councilwoman Hess, committee report, please.
Uh, Mr. Shetzel, uh, the Bill number eighty-one twenty-five comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner.
Good evening, Brianna McCall, interim director of environmental health for the Saint Joseph County Department of Health, located here in the county city building on the ninth floor. Uh, so the proposed ordinance before you is just to ensure the, or to enhance the public health and safety of residents, residents of Saint Joseph County, both that visit these parlors, but also work in these parlors.
All right. Any questions from counsel for the petitioner? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to, uh, public comment. I'm sorry. Yes, we'll move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, um, my name is Daylen Jones, uh, six-three-one East Eighteenth Street, Mishawaka, Indiana. I wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My grandma always told me that it was important to pay attention to what's going on in our world, and tonight I'm here to address the growing concern that has quietly spread throughout our area for decades, the increasing number of these massage parlors operating under false pretenses. These establishments are not isolated incidents, they're everywhere. You can drive down Lincoln Way from Osceola to South Bend, along nine thirty-three, Grape Road, McKinley, Ireland, and you'll see them in nearly every commercial stretch. While there are certainly legitimate massage therapy businesses that operate professionally and ethically, many of these others are fronts for prostitution, and more disturbingly, human trafficking. These signs are hard to ignore. The locations have locked doors, cameras, dimly lit interiors. The women are frequently dressed inappropriately for a professional spa or therapeutic environment, and the behavior toward male and female customers is noticeably different. A simple online search through Google on sites like Reddit reveals discussions openly sharing with local parlors offering more than a massage. Some of these businesses have operated for years, been shut down, and even reopened under new names and new addresses. It's a repeating pattern that makes enforcement feel like a never-ending cycle. This is not a legal issue, it's a moral one. Uh, these are not victimless crimes. Many of the women inside these establishments are being exploited, controlled, or trafficked, and these are places that continue to multiply. They also erode their, uh, reputation of legitimate massage therapists and create an unsafe, unhealthy environment for everyone. As someone who has been, who has seen firsthand the devastation this kind of activity can cause, I'm asking that we do take a harder look at these operations, require stronger licensing, verification, more frequent inspections, and a deeper collaboration with law enforcement to shut down those that are engaging in the illegal or exploitive behavior. That's why I do fully support the Health Department's proposed involvement requiring licensed massage therapists verifying that these are not living facilities and holding owners accountable for compliance. Um, these are simple, reasonable steps, I think, that can make a tremendous difference in filtering out illegal activity from legitimate businesses, and I think it's time we take a stronger action. These operations should not be allowed to thrive in plain sight right here in our neighborhoods. With greater oversight collaboration between law enforcement and local agencies and consistent enforcement, we can protect the vulnerable, restore public trust, and make our community safer for everyone. Thank you for listening and taking this issue seriously. I think it's time that we shed light in these dark places.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else in the room wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone online wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone in the room wish to speak in opposition to this bill? Does anyone online wish to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-five. Any further comments from council members?
Mr. Shetzel?
Ms. Drake.
I want to thank Daylen for coming here today, and your testimony is wonderful. Um, Daylen told me she was going to be here, so I'm, I'm very appreciative. Um, I also want to commend the Health Department on bringing this all to our attention. Um, these are simple and reasonable changes that could make a difference, um, and I think it's really opened all of our eyes, so good job, Health Department.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Katanzerite.
Much like Ms. Drake's comments, um, appreciate Ms. Jones for sharing her testimony tonight, makes a big difference, and especially thankful for Dr. Migliore and her leadership, and Brianna McCall for bringing this to our attention and strengthening our existing massage ordinance rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Anyone else? I too would just like to thank the Health Department for taking this stand. This has been an issue a couple different times in my district, and, you know, I think it's, we're long overdue to get tough on this type of behavior, so thank you. All right. Seeing no other comments, clerk, will you please take the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. We, we could use a motion, that would help, yes. May I have a motion? I have a motion to pass for Mr. Katanzerite, seconded by Mr. Tanner. Now, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutton?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
And President Shetzel?
Yes.
Bill passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number eighty-one dash twenty-five was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read Bill number sixty dash twenty-five?
Bill number sixty dash twenty-five, the Community First Investment Ordinance of Saint Joseph County, petitioners Daniel J. Shetzel, Brian Tanner, Mark Katanzerite, Diana Hess, and Jennifer Shabazz.
Committee report, Councilman Tanner.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee, uh, who's this bill, uh, with a favorable, with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. And Mr. Tanner, I believe you are also the petitioner.
Yes. Uh, just a few brief comments. This has been a collaborative effort that's involved extensive conversation with the economic development team, uh, with the county, uh, received feedback and include, um, that correspondence from council members, um, engagement with the public and incorporation of some of those, uh, ideas or concepts that may need, may have been desired to, uh, get woven back into our base abatement, uh, requirements that are considered. And as a whole, uh, this isn't just about changing policy, it's about creating, uh, a more accessible, fair, and community-focused economic development process. The changes streamline the abatement rules, reducing the ordinance from twenty-four pages down to nine. It expands who can utilize tax abatements, lowers the threshold for, uh, business size and type of business, uh, for the first time ever, expanding, uh, the availability of utilizing a tax abatement for housing development, uh, the cost of which we're all sensitive to, uh, the housing affordability crisis. And it simplifies what has otherwise been, um, somewhat of a complex process that I think was well-intended, well-informed, it was community-driven, uh, but had the unfortunate consequence of, um, being hard to decipher or navigate for our small businesses in the community, and required the expertise of outside consultation at the expense that, uh, those businesses may not have been motivated to or understood, uh, what that process, uh, would look like with a lot of questions left on the back end. Uh, this means that small businesses can now, uh, more of them can take advantage of this. Uh, it, it, uh, expands and improves the understanding of how the tax abatement process works, and it, um, improves requirements that I think, uh, really inform the, the name of it. Uh, it's very rare that I would induce any kind of name to an ordinance, but community first, uh, um, being within that name, that we are prioritizing local businesses within our community, uh, to be the performers of the majority of the work, uh, whether that be contractors, subcontractors, consultants for the design, uh, those providing transportation of materials and things of that nature. But it's also reasonable with those expectations, that not all work, especially specialized work, um, can be performed by those contractors and consultants in our area, so it also gives consideration to those, uh, regional businesses, uh, within counties that are just beyond Saint Joseph County's corners whenever it's not practicable or accessible to use contractors within our own county. It does enhance, uh, and require the submittal of an EEOC document from the Equal Employment Op, uh, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, uh, but that is also a burden that's not levied upon our small businesses because, uh, that document is only required of those businesses that have at least one hundred employees and already fill out that report for their federal requirements. It does restate some of the, uh, Indiana code, uh, that relates to the opportunities and possibility that this council has the power to enact, uh, while not requiring us to adhere to that. Uh, one of the points of feedback that has been received often is, um, that there's now mention of a up-to-twenty-year tax abatement, uh, which is not intended or implied that the county, uh, or this council's going to approve those, but it is a restatement of Indiana law that allows for that in extenuating circumstances, and an opportunity that's always been available to the county to expand, uh, to that level. Additionally, uh, we've induced new standards for average wages at a minimum of a hundred and twenty-five percent of our, uh, county's average wage. Uh, I think many of the people who were involved with the conversations, whether it be the economic development team, the council, or others, uh, in the community, recognize that median wage is, uh, generally going to be a much better measure of wages, and it, uh, eliminates that possibility of outsized corporate executives, uh, swinging the average compared to a median measurement, uh, but unfortunately, Indiana state law only allows us to contemplate average wages within tax abatement considerations. To that end, um, this is presented to the council with a favorable recommendation as mentioned before, and I suppose we would open it up to any other questions unless the other co-sponsors would like to make a statement.
Any questions from council for the petitioner?
Mr. Shetzel?
Councilwoman Drake.
Um, so I've consulted, um, with the Chamber of Commerce, and I know they were tangentially involved, but I think that they feel like they would have liked to be a lot more involved, and I have a list, I'm just going to pass this down, these were a lot of the recommendations they still had, um, for the bill. I'm going to read them all into the record, um, but I know there are a lot, so you can look at them yourself, but it says this draft requires a minimum requirement of which a majority portion of the project cost were practicable, practi, practicable, uh, to be performed by a local company or companies. Where the requirement is not possible, regional companies may be used to supplement the use of local companies where applicable. We don't love this language and some of the ambiguity that goes with it. We have a few general contractors from Saint Joseph County, so this is limiting for companies seeking competitive bids. Who determines if this is practicable, I can't say this word, practicable, and when it's okay to add a regional company instead of a local one? Um, another suggestion, the draft requires, this includes an average wage for employees, which is at least one hundred and twenty-five percent of the average wage in Saint Joseph County, Indiana, as reported in the decennial census or the U.S. Census Bureau Americans Community Survey, whichever is most recent. A couple of suggestions. First, do we want a hundred and twenty-five percent of the average wage county wage, or a hundred and twenty-five percent of the average wage for that industry? For example, on the HVAC business the county did an abatement for recently, was well below the average for that industry and the county wage as a whole. We would prefer for the industry. You might have a company heavy on production workers. Those wages are a little lower than the average county wage, which is heavily influenced by healthcare and higher education. Also, the Bureau of Labor Statistics should be the source, not the census, as it is the most up-to-date wage information. Next, this is what we're trying to accomplish with the original tax abatement bill. Generally, it is up to you. Here you're saying you have to meet all these requirements, but at the end of the day, it's up to you. That's in reference to not having actually to go through this abatement, there's a clause that allows you to go around the abatement ordinance. So I think the question here is, why do we have an abatement ordinance if we can go around the abatement ordinance? It would be a lot more simple to just let each company argue its, on its own merits. Um, also, this, um, this abatement, um, it implies that there would be an application, um, but it doesn't actually include the application, so I think that's something else, um, the chamber, as well as I, would like to see. And then finally, in terms of the, um, enforcement and compliance section, it says, I think traditionally companies were required to submit information and only appear if there were questions or problems. Do companies need to appear again? I know this is a lot, but I think because they didn't necessarily feel completely included in this, and they also thought maybe we should be talking to more businesses and contractors, we may want to hold off and see if we can work some- we may want to hold off and see if we can work some of these changes in. I don't know what your feelings are on that, Mr. Tanner.
I'm so glad you asked. That, that series of comments or statements mirrors the email communication that I received from Mr. Ray as well yesterday afternoon, to which I responded to midday today. With regard to the minimum requirement of a majority portion of the project cost as it relates to local companies, I responded, "This language was drafted by our council attorney and reviewed by the Economic Development Team for alignment and ability to administer. Also, the availability of general contractors does not restrict the ability to use and rely on an abundance of subcontractors." As it relates to the wage requirements in the 125% statement, I responded yesterday saying that I don't see why we would want to use industry averages that are lower than county averages. We don't want to lower the standard for those companies seeking a tax benefit when those employees could end up relying on other benefits from the public. But I also responded today that there appears to be alignment and support to make an amendment that changes the use of the Bureau of Labor Statistics as the unit of measure rather than the census or the American Community Survey. Within less than 24 hours, I've reached out to the Economic Development Team and the cosponsors of this bill, who all agreed that that is a better unit of measure, and we were glad to have received the suggestion and will make the recommendation on the floor tonight to make that amendment. For 3506A and B, that is a restatement of state law. Whether or not we include it in our ordinance, it's still going to be a state law. But this, our ordinance isn't just our standards. It's also a communication tool for the applicants. And rather than having to seek additional resources elsewhere, we've embedded that language from state law into our ordinance so that those small businesses can navigate this process more easily. We'd love to still see an actual application so we know what the county is asking for. My response to that, "It is the Economic Development Team's intent to develop a corresponding application, but we did not want to codify the application if it needs to change. Why induce additional ordinance changes for the change of a form?" And for that last point, 35.20A, the question was, "I think traditional companies," or "I think traditionally, companies were required to submit information and only appear if there were questions or problems. Do companies really need to, quote, 'appear,' end quote," again. We're not independently requiring them to appear. They're already required to appear at the committee meeting according to state law due to the State Board of Tax Commissioners. We're not adding any additional requirements to people. We are restating the requirements that are already bound to them by state law and making it easier for them to navigate the process by including it in our ordinance. Yeah, those were a lot of questions, and I summarily responded to those questions with Mr. Ray in that email thread yesterday and today, when given just over 24 hours to respond to this. And we acted on one of those with the intent to instill and apply that amendment on the floor for the different statistic source, being the Bureau of Labor Statistics for average wages, rather than the census and the American Community Survey that was previously mentioned in the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner. Do we have any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Rutten?
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't quite sure on the language for the EEOC, and I just wanted to, you know, follow up and ask the question. Is there an action required with that? Is there an action to submit something to the county with that statement?
Yes, their EEOC form would need to be filed with the county, along with their SB1 form that they're already required to file with the county by state law.
So that would be in duplicate to submitting that form with the federal government?
Yes. But rather than the county having to seek out that documentation, it would be provided to us without the additional effort by anybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutten. Any other questions? Mr. Katanzerite?
Just a comment on Mr. Drake's proposal. I mean, I agree on the Bureau Labor Statistics that Mr. Tanner mentioned. I think that would be a great source versus, you know, and that was a suggestion by the chamber. And you made a comment that, why don't we just handle them all on a case-by-case basis? I think we at least want a guiding document, because we're not going to all be here necessarily in the future, all of us collectively. I think we want a standard, we want to set a standard, and I think the community has always asked us for that, that we need to set a standards for granting tax abatement, that it's not measured on a case-by-case basis, that there is at least a minimum standard that companies must come to us. And by having this codified, I think it does send the message that we are open for business, and these are the minimum standards we would ask you to at least abide by in applying for a tax abatement from our county. So I think, I think it's important that we have something versus nothing. I think it's important to have that, rather than looking at each one on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Anyone else? Mr. Fig?
This is my fourth year in the council, and there's two votes I wish I could take back the last four years. The first one, I did vote for the Amazon tax abatement. And after our property taxes have come out and checking in property taxes, why did I vote for a multimillion-dollar company to get a tax abatement? And my apologies. The other one I voted for, I can't remember what it was, to be blunt about it. But I really have a problem with the 20-year. I really have a problem with the, for a larger company. I just don't think we should even consider those. My opinion, I'm one of nine, but no more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fig. How many abatements have we done this year? Zero. That's correct. Okay, thank you. We haven't done any this year. Of course, Amazon was 24.
Last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Was the...
Mr. Rutten?
The HVAC business?
I'm sorry, Mr. Rutten. You wish to speak?
Sorry. I thought we were just kind of discussing. Was there an HVAC business that received an abatement? Was that last year or this year?
No.
Twenty-four. Twenty-four. Twenty-four, okay.
I believe that's in your district, right?
Yes.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to public comments. Public hearing on Bill Number 60-25. This is your opportunity to speak as the public. Is there anyone in the room would like to speak in favor of this bill?
Point of order.
A point of order.
Do we want to make an amendment now so it's part of the public hearing? Mr. Tanner?
Mr. Augustino?
I think that's the pleasure of the council, but it may be appropriate to have the amendment now.
Yes, Mr. Katanzerite.
I'd like to amend Section 35.4, 35.04, Number 4, that we changed the language in there, that we use the Bureau of Labor Statistics versus the U.S. Census Bureau's American Community Survey for establishing the county's wages.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Katanzerite, seconded by Mr. Tanner, to change the source of the labor statistics that are used to, the data wage information, to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Any comments from council?
Yeah. Change it to, ask the chamber.
Mr. Rutten?
I think it's a positive change. I still have some, some other concerns here, but I, I think it's, you know, requested by the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's a positive change.
Thank you, Mr. Rutten. All right. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Point of order, can you please restate the amendment?
Mr. Katanzerite, will you please restate the amendment for Councilwoman Drake?
I'd like to make an amendment that in Section 35.04, Item 4, that we change the language for determining the county wage, what currently reads as the U.S. Census Bureau's American Community Survey, change that language to, strike that language, and change it to the, using, utilizing the Bureau of Labor Statistics wage scale. Is that what you were intending with that one?
What I was intending?
Well, when you, in your handout.
It's what the chamber was intending.
Okay. That's, that was my intention.
All right. Any other council comments? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Fig?
Yes.
Mrs. Chabaz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Rutten?
Yes.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzerite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
The amendment passes nine to zero.
All right. Let the record show that, that Section 35.04 has been amended nine to zero. All right. We will go ahead now and open up the public hearing on Bill Number 60-25. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening again. Mike McManus, 51940 Lyle Lake Road, South Bend. Congratulations. This is exactly how county government should work, in particular, on expanding the accessibility of tax abatements. That's a wonderful thing. Many of us have been concerned about the county's finances being more and more reliant on the big giant data centers and what they're going to provide. I think that we're encouraging small businesses, which are the backbone of the foundation of our country, is a wonderful thing. And I, so I think this is exactly an appropriate step to be taking. Only word of caution that I have is related to the amendment, and that's, I think the current administration in Washington, D.C., has announced that if it could, it would not issue the labor statistics anymore, and certainly not on a monthly basis. So you, just something, you're going to have to dig harder to find that information. But the overall bill is a wonderful thing for the county, and I thank you for it.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
All right. My name is Ben Dallas. I live in Mishawaka. Yeah, I'm in favor of this abatement. I'm comparing it to the previous abatement that twice failed. I happened to notice that everybody actually got to see some of this stuff and got involved. People weren't closed out. Everybody got to see the process, and we had recommendations from everybody. So I like that. I like that this abatement includes small businesses. I think that's, that is the backbone of, you know, our economy in this area. Yeah, so I think it's a good thing. Also, I like the fact that they changed the statistics from the amendment we just did. I think that's a positive thing. And also, I agree with Councilman Fig, what he said about the Amazon, the Amazon thing, because lots of, what people don't realize about a lot of these data centers, after the first year and a half, 95% of those people, they all, they all go away. It's a smaller group of people that continue to work in those data centers. And they're not paying taxes for what, 20 years? Is that what you were saying? So I agree with what you said there. I don't know what the, what the number is, but they're getting a tax break for a long amount of time, whatever that is. And, and the, it starts off with like, what, five, 6,000 people to build the footprint, and then they leave, there's about maybe 1,000 left after they leave. So there's a big reduction in workforce, and they're still not paying all the taxes for a long amount of time. So I agree with what you said there. And, um, yeah, I think this is a good abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dallas. Anyone else in the room wish to speak in favor? Anyone online wish to speak in favor of this bill? Ms. Wolf?
Charlotte Wolf, 21439 Osborne Road, Lakeville. And I'm very pleased that council has, has brought this up. I've been going to meetings for years now, trying to caution about throwing our tax money into abatements for these large multinational corporations who really are coming in to the community and not really caring about what's going on in the community. They just want to use our resources and leave. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive, Clay Township. Yeah, I was involved in the original tax abatement ordinance back in 2009. My comments are really for the petitioner, the sponsors of this bill, and the petitioner, the supporter, the author, to a great extent. A couple of months ago, we had a lot of opposition expressed to you about the affirmative, the elimination of affirmative action in the previous tax abatement ordinance. And we were promised that we would have something equivalent to or even better than included in this one, and that is just factually untrue. And if you vote for this because you're sponsors, you are fooling the public into thinking that because you require a company to follow federal law, that somehow that instills some kind of requirement for businesses here to seek out disadvantaged groups. It does not. It just simply requires the business to follow federal law and submit a form. Secondly, I tried to get some additional things into this that were reflective of the need to reduce the complexity, but when you get too simplified, you actually create a situation where you're not requiring enough of companies when they are going to receive up to a 20-year abatement. I object to the 20-year abatement with nothing more than just, they have to have a hearing after 10 years. The salary requirement, I tried, I, I suggested a minimum salary requirement. Those of you who are sponsoring this, there's no minimum salary requirement in here. There's an average salary requirement, which can be easily gamed with high executive salaries and working stiff salaries where the average is 125% of the BLS or whatever survey you use. Thirdly, there's nothing in here about community benefits beyond a local contractor. There's no requirement for local employment? Where's the local employment? A local contractor can hire out-of-state employees as well. There's no requirement for any kind of social or community or environmental benefits. I suggested some beyond the five-year level, because give a five-year abatement, but if they go to 10, five to 10, then you should require these additional, these additional requirements, because you're giving our tax money away to a business in a phase-in or a tax break, however you want to call it, but without any additional requirements. I think this is not properly vetted. I don't feel that the consideration that I gave in consultation with community members, by the way, was adequately considered. I never received comment back from the author. I never received any kind of explanation of why many of the things that we suggested were ignored and not included, one of which was a cap, which really would put a restriction on these large abatements. People are fooled. This is not going to restrict large abatements.
Mr. Francis, your time is up.
It includes, it includes small businesses, but not, it doesn't do anything for large businesses. And we're seeing a big one coming with Microsoft next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Ray, President and CEO, Southland Regional Chamber, with offices at 101 North Michigan Street. I'm in this weird spot here where I, I don't really fall in the for or against. I really, I want to compliment Councilman Tanner for sitting down with us and for talking through some of those things. I'm not quite 100% there, is why I'm on the, on the opposed side. This is a tool that you, this council and the councils before you have used very judiciously. It's very rarely used. I think we all wish that we, that there weren't such a thing as tax abatement, but our competitors across the country use them, and sometimes we have to do them for a deal. When companies are looking to invest here, it's about the ninth or 10th thing on their list. There are a lot of other factors that are key in their, in their decision-making process. But for 15 years, it's been a priority to improve this ordinance, so I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good, and this is much better than what we've seen before. However, still, a couple of concerns. You've heard a few of them. Perhaps the one, though, that maybe is, is most concerning to us still, and I think needs some clarity, Mr. Tanner didn't necessarily answer it in his email to me, nor in his comment earlier this evening, was related to contractors. And so you call this the Community First Investment Ordinance, which means this is your top priority. You put a name... You put a name on it. But what's weird for us is there's no clarity in terms of how you pick those contractors. So businesses are picking contractors for a lot of reasons. One, because they get a good price from it. One, because they can do the job when they, when they need it to be done. One, because they have a special expertise, those kind of things. And so curious is to, if you've thought through the process of this, because not everybody's going to be able to meet this local requirement. We certainly want them to invest locally, that's who our members are, but we also know that the economy doesn't work that way. It's really a regional economy. We know that you have the provision in there, but it's really unclear to us when you would say it's okay for you to use a regional contractor instead of a local contractor. And so that's, you know, I think kind of top of mind for us on this is that that's just a process that we hope is thought through and maybe some more understanding happens with that. You mentioned to me in your note that subcontractors, but the ordinance says the majority, and typically the prime contractor is always going to do the majority of the work, and the subs are going to be, do a partial. So if, so we're not going to be able to get over fifty percent of subs, if you will. Also, the last two abatements in particular couldn't meet the local or the regional requirement. So you're going to have some that don't meet it. I suppose you, you've accounted for that because the council gets a chance. So, but I just would like for some clarity on that. I do think, I don't want to throw a bucket of water on the small business thing, but the threshold for new equipment is $2 million. That's not very small. I understand you guys can waive that, but that's a threshold there that will be very difficult for a small business to reach. That's a pretty significant investment there, and so I just toss that out. Overall, I think we're, we've made terrific progress. I thank you for what you've done on the progress there. Again, I don't want perfect to be the enemy of good. We're heading in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Good evening. My name's Joseph Cooper. I live at three-two-one West Thirteenth Street in Mishawaka, four-six-five-four-four. First of all, I want to congratulate the committee for putting out as much information as been put out on this, including the markup and strike-throughs that were included in the agenda for this period. So you had to go back, you had to look at the, you didn't even have to look at the original because you could see what was struck out. I did note that there's not really a threshold or a, a small business look at this, and especially when you get into some aspects of the process and the amount of money for equipment. But what I'm concerned about, and what I think most city and county residents are concerned about, is abatements of this magnitude, how that's reflected in the tax record, and the length of those abatements. Especially with Senate bill, I think it was two, which froze everything in the county, but gave you all the offer, the option of increasing the income tax, which all of you will probably say, oh, no, no, we haven't had any official discussions. But I can guarantee you, after thirty years being in government work, those discussions are going on about what can we get away with, when can we do it, and how do we present it? So what you do when you do an abatement, especially for places like Amazon, is you shift all that liability over to increased property taxes for the residents. And you may not have approved any. That doesn't mean that there's not been abatements, granted by the three other folks. But I just want to bring up the fact that abatements are not necessarily good, especially in this environmental aspect. I also want to object to the use of changing to this federal statistics. Anyone watching what's going on in Washington should be very cautious about changing over to any document that can be discarded and dismissed by the administration. And they are doing that. They're doing that with unemployment records, they're doing that with projections of economic stability and inflation, and they will be doing that with average wages. If you want to do average wages, just say a living wage. You need to pay them a living wage, because I find it hypocritical that a bunch of people sitting down in Indianapolis can say seven dollars and, what, twenty-five cents is a living wage? And it's not. And the games that corporations like Amazon play, where they don't schedule you full-time because that would require
Mr. Cooper, your time is up.
Yes, okay. That would require benefits. And they don't want sick time, they don't want vacation time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, your time is up. Thank you.
That's a negative number. Okay, thank you very much. Good luck.
Anyone else in the room who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this bill? Oh, yep. Mr. Wolfson?
Thank you. My name is Marty Wolfson. I live at eight-oh-nine Park Avenue in South Bend. I'm opposed to bill sixty-twenty-five. It eliminates most of the county's tax abatement ordinance and replaces it with next to nothing. A large coalition of community organizations and individuals came together to pass the existing ordinance. It included, among others, the AFL-CIO, a community forum for economic development, the League of Women Voters, Martin Luther King Senior Men's Club, the Sierra Club, the Northeast Neighborhood Council, South Bend NAACP, St. Joseph Valley Building and Construction Trades Council, and the St. Joseph Valley Project. The principle of the original ordinance was that taxpayer money should only be used to subsidize companies that were providing real benefits to the community. The ordinance specified benefits that a company could choose to provide, and the more benefits, the longer the abatement. These benefits included, among others, employing local construction workers as well as contractors, meeting energy-efficient standards on buildings, paying company workers decent wages, as well as benefits such as pensions, training, daycare, and transportation assistance. We know that the council did not strictly follow this ordinance in recent years, but what is the reason for eliminating it? The benefits in bill sixty-twenty-five refer only to local construction companies and average wages in a statement to obey the law. Everything else in the existing ordinance is gone. Earlier this year, the four Democrats on the council, along with Representative Shetzel, defeated an attempt to repeal the existing ordinance. So why is this coalition now sponsoring a bill that would essentially do the same thing? Especially since two members of the current council were strong proponents of the ordinance when it was originally passed. Again, I urge the council to defeat bill sixty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfson. Anyone else online wish to speak in opposition to this bill? Seeing none, are there any further comments from council members?
Mr. Shetzel?
Councilwoman Drake?
So I wanted to talk about how this abatement works with AWS. So AWS went around this abatement ordinance, so it doesn't have to follow the rules, I mean, the old one. But you could do it also the same way in the new one. And so Commissioner Baxmeyer, Mr. Rutten, Mr. Fig, Mr. Thomas, and I all wrote a letter to AWS, trying to find out how much they're using local labor and local suppliers. And they gave us very underwhelming answers, and in fact, it was kind of a painful process of three months going back and forth in emails, and they really didn't want to tell us much. They, at first, they just said, we rely on general contractors to make all contracting decisions. And my response was, it's not large contractors receiving the abatement, so it falls on Amazon to ensure that our local labors and suppliers, both union and non-union, are being used to the fullest extent possible. So while your current abatement policy says companies must use labor to a certain degree or local labor, we've seen abatement requirements easily circumvented by the big guys. These are the companies you probably most want to be using, local labor and suppliers, as it's your biggest impact. So what I'm saying is that this abatement doesn't guarantee anything for local labor. And just a few more comments on this as a whole. It's a guiding document, and you're saying it's setting a standard, but it's really too big for ninety, for the ninety-three percent of our small businesses in our county. You know, we, Mr. Ray already talked about the $2 million personal property. You have ten thousand, ten thousand square feet rehabilitations, warehouses that have to be twenty-five thousand square feet, developments that can be no less than fifty units. I don't think many small businesses are going to feel that they compete, can compete in this, and they're just going to not even get to the end where it says maybe you can go around this. And again, we've seen the big companies go around this, not the little companies. I think this could be more fair. I think also when you ask people to give you a list of their local contractors, those can be screened, and you can say, I'm only going to give you an abatement if you're using union contractors, and that's not fair. We want it to be available to union and non-union, and put our community first more. It also could be more streamlined. I know you reduced it, and that's great. I mean, that was, that's something we wanted to do too, but it's still complicated, complicated enough that I have to read it several times through to try to understand what's all in there. So it's not necessarily an easy document. And finally, I would say the twenty-year abatement, maybe it's a restatement of state law, but putting it in this ordinance is sending a signal that we want to use it, and I don't want to use it. We don't know what the economy is going to look like in twenty years. It doesn't make sense to be doing these abatements more than five or ten years out, and we shouldn't be doing a ton of these abatements. So those are my comments.
Any other comments? All right, yes, Mr. Katanzerite.
I see him in the room, so I have a couple of questions if Mr. Shalio could help address some questions that were raised tonight, as it relates to tax abatements, because it concerns me a bit. I'm not sure if the information that was given is accurate or not. So, Mr. Shalio, I have some questions for you.
Certainly.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sorry. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure, Planning and Growth, with offices on the seventh and eleventh floor.
So we stated earlier, Mr. Shalio, that no taxes are coming in during the abatement period for the AWS project. Can you clarify that statement, one? And two, maybe, based on what you say, compare what was being generated as ag land versus what is or maybe generated as an industrial?
Yeah, so from a starting point, the tax abatement that was set up for Amazon has three components. For real property, it's a per shell, fifty percent abatement for ten years. So fifty percent of the taxes on real property will be paid. There's no abatement on personal property. And then on enterprise technology, it's an eighty-five percent for thirty-five years. So once enterprise technology payments are made, they'll pay fifteen percent of that over the course of the thirty-five-year abatement per shell, per, per abatement. So there will be taxes. The first year, we'll see property taxes really come in, in full force will be 2027. We'll see some value come in in 2026, in the twenty-five, pay twenty-six year, but the majority of taxes will start to really come into full effect in 2027.
Do you know, do you know approximate, or can you approximate what those numbers are?
Yeah, we
I forgot the numbers we talked about.
And, and we're, we're continuing to work with Mike Castellano and his team to really come up with some clarification on that. We had estimated that the per shell building with all of the taxes, real property, personal property, and enterprise could generate anywhere from four to five million dollars per year per shell in that first ten years, and then once the abatement rolls off for real property, that number would jump up. But again, we're working with Mike and Steve Dalton and several others to actually come up with a true value, because again, it's kind of a unique project to our markets and trying to understand what that value will be, so that we can evaluate that against other projects as we move forward.
So that's four million dollars?
Per shell, per, yeah, yep.
From date, from year one?
Yes.
So, and there's sixteen shells anticipated?
Right now, yeah, and again, they're built and will be assessed in phases. So some, some of the buildings that right now are a hundred percent on January first will be assessed at a hundred percent completion. Some of those buildings, there's two buildings on SBN one-hundred, which is the northern campus, that probably by, by January one will just have structural steel up, so it'll be assessed at a much lower value. So you'll see a period of years where, where there's different rates and different values being brought in, per building, per, per site.
Okay, it's helpful.
And I think your second question was
Well, versus ag, comparison.
Yeah, so right now, I think when we figured it out, when we looked at the tax bills for SBN one-hundred and the two-hundred, or two-oh-one, two-ten site, if I remember right, they were paying about $25,000 a year in, in property taxes. And that, some of them had improvements on them, so some of the value might have been a little higher because there were improvements factored into those tax bills when we were looking at those values. So, so that obviously the value of then versus improved, differently improved, you know, are going to obviously create a different level of tax stream in.
Can you speak to the state law that permits the length of the abatement that is mentioned in this proposed ordinance?
Yeah, so the, the tax abatement ordinance at the state level has the, the regular provisions for real property, personal property, and then there's what they have, the super abatement statute. Our current ordinance, I think, only has the super abatement statute going to fifteen years, and then probably six or seven years ago, the state changed the super abatement statute to a twenty-year term, but anything over ten requires public hearings, I think, on a yearly basis and other conditions. Right now, we have personal property that extends, I'm trying to think, I think the Energy Center and probably, I think the Energy Center is really the only one out there that has a, an abatement period longer, ONGM, for personal property. Both were set at fifteen years, real property at ten years.
And then obviously, enterprise technology is a state law
Mm-hmm.
that allows that equipment to be abated for up to thirty-five years?
Actually, it's, it's, it's an indeterminate. A lot of the communities in the state have gone with fifty-year abatement periods. We elected at thirty-five, set our model on the thirty-five-year model, and when is thirty-five is the, the max cap here?
As being suggested, you know, not having an abatement over ten years, I mean, I would agree, yeah, I don't like them any longer than ten years either, but if we didn't have that, as we compete with other communities within our state of Indiana, would that put us at a disadvantage if we had a lower abatement period than the other communities?
Well, I think it depends on the project, but I think you have to take enterprise technology off, it's kind of a separate element, and if you just look at real and personal property, you know, again, ten years, five years usually are the cap for a lot of those. So I think a lot of communities play in that space. Again, I think it was mentioned earlier, we very rarely use tax abatement as a tool. I mean, we've done zero this year. We've had a couple of prospects that are interested, we'll probably see one come through next year. You've worked with Laydig in the past, they're interested in one probably after the first of the year. They're waiting to see how this ordinance went through before they made decisions on how they would move forward. So likely, we'll still move forward, but just trying to understand the process.
That helps me out. I appreciate your information. Thank you.
Do you have a question for Mr. Shalio? Okay, Mr. Thomas?
Hey, Bill?
Yep.
Now, explain for our, for the general, for our, for our folks in the room and the people who are listening online, when you say the word "real," I know what this all means, real property, personal property, can you explain that, kind of narrow that down when you say "real" property?
Yep, so, so real property would be the land and the improvements. Now, we can't abate land itself in the, in the base sense, but the, the land and improvements that are built, and then personal property are the furnishings and fixtures within the building itself.
Which, but the technology part of it, does that, that does not include the computers that are in the building?
No, so in the case
That's a separate abatement.
Anything that qualifies as a data center or certain things within state law, then can then take their personal property and re-further classify it as enterprise technology, and then qualify the, for the energy or enterprise technology exemption.
So, their, Amazon was on CNBC, I'm putting you on the spot here, about their up and running. They mentioned New Carlyle.
Yes.
So when, if they're up and running, and why are we until January? Aren't they going to get a partial, aren't they going to be assessed this year? Or is that up to the assessor? How, what are we going to see in the funding? I know we all talk about getting into twenty- I know we all talk about getting into 2027. How many and when is the, the turn-on period of us getting some tax dollars?
So when we started this process in August of 2024, which is really when they started doing construction, there were zero data center improvements on the site as of Jan, January 1, 202004. So if you're in '24, you would pay your pat, property taxes 25, you'd pay it, you know, you'd pay a year in arrears. As of 2025, improvements were made on site. So there were five or six buildings at some level of construction as of January 1, 2025. So that takes that year of improvement. So then in 2026, when they reassess the site, right now, we've got seven buildings at some level of near completion, two under construction on SBN 100, nine buildings at some level of construction on the Southern Site. So the, the assessment of the buildings in 2026, where they'll pay property taxes in 2027, will be a lot more complete. It really will be 2027, when everything's assessed. We'll see a lot more of the 100%s come in, but those taxes won't be paid till 2028. So really, 2027 is the first year we're going to see a large portion of the tax payments. 2028 is when we'll see a lot more, based on the completion of the buildings.
So when they say they're up and running?
Mm-hmm.
What does that mean tax-wise for us, as a county? I mean, since it wasn't, is statutorily, January, you talk about January 1?
January 1, statutorily is the date at which a building is assessed. Every year, everything's assessed as of the?
So then you go through now till November, it's obviously not assessed now?
Correct.
So, and we got to wait till January 1?
Correct.
And who makes that decision?
I believe that's the state.
The state?
Yeah.
The, the state gives what, us the okay?
I think the state, I, I, you know, we can, we can bring the assessor in and, and talk with him about how the process works. Every year, all properties are assessed as of their condition, as of January 1.
So the assessor's going to probably have that, make that decision, then, it sounds like.
That's his, one of his responsibilities, that's correct.
And if they're not done, even if, say they're 50% down, 50% done on some shells, 50% taxes, right?
That's correct, yes.
On real and?
Well, it would be on, on the real improvements.
Technology.
Well, the, they're required, so if it's 50% at, of, of real property, they may have some personal property they report, they may have some enterprise technology they report, but they won't, I mean, they're required, you self-report personal property and enterprise technology. So you're required to do that on a yearly basis, yearly filing, too. So those are reviewed again by the assessor's office on a yearly basis.
You mentioned 4 to 5 million per shell in taxes, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Are you using that as an average, or?
The numbers, when we originally went through the project, I think the, as, as I remember the numbers, without the numbers in front of me, we estimated that those buildings at build-out level, at 100% with equipment and technology built into them, could generate 4 to 5 billion a year, if I remember those numbers correct.
That's at 100% completion?
Yes, operational, yes.
Thank you. I'd like to ask. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Fig.
Bill, isn't Amazon project, isn't that in a TIF?
It is, that's correct.
So it's in the TIF, so all this money they're bringing in is going to stay in this TIF. So I don't see how that's really going to help my district or the people from New Carlyle.
Well, I, I think?
How it's going to work out.
I, I think, I think that's what?
I don't mean to put you on the spot, though, but?
No, no.
But we're talking about all these millions of dollars.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't see how it's going to help North Liberty and Walkerton. I just don't see it.
Well, you're, you're correct. And so I think as we look at other projects, where we explore things like Pilot Light or some of these other, other economic development tools, perhaps that's where we would use one of those to spread money around the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have. Thank you. Just to clarify that a little bit, though, that TIF money is being spent in and around the Amazon location. First of all, you have some radius around which you can use that money, and secondly, it does allow us to shift money we would have spent there for other things to other parts of the county, correct?
That's correct, yeah. So generally, under TIF law, it has to be in or serving the area. So we try to be very conservative of what serving is and not stretch the serving definition well outside of the area. Other communities have learned to stretch that definition beyond a, a level we would be comfortable with.
Mr. Katanzrite, did you have another question?
Just, just a comment on Mr. Fig's comment, maybe, Mr. Shalio can confirm this. I mean, outs, outside of the tax generation by property taxes, I mean, optional income taxes for anybody who, who lives in North Liberty or Osceola or any part of the county, anybody who's working is paying optional income taxes, right? So it's going to be a global regional benefit to the entire county?
Yes, that's correct.
For all the employees that are working there, whether you're a construction worker or a permanent employee?
Yeah, income taxes aren't kept within the taxing, the TIF district. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas, did you have another question?
But just to clarify to Mr. Fig, you know, the money, the tax money, in layman's terms, staying out there in that area. They're going to have all that money, fix the infrastructure, fix the roads. So therefore, that takes some heat off our general fund budget, so say it costs X amount of dollars to do all the roads out there, but that's coming out of the TIF money, not our general fund. So just for the public to understand that, TIF always sounds kind of complicated and overwhelming, I think. It always did to me, but I think it's simp, you know, simplified, am I correct on that, Bill? You can jump in.
Yeah.
But that's going to stay out there, fix those roads. That way, the general fund will have more money, not, won't be fixing roads out there because the, the TIF will take care of that.
Yeah, and, and I would even say, let me make two points. First, to that point, you know, again, inner serving, but that doesn't mean over time those boundaries can't be expanded to, to cover other areas that need roads improved in that area. So those boundaries can be expanded to cover additional services. So yes, you're right, we can take other revenue, Motor Vehicle Highway Fund or some of those other funds, Bridge Fund, things like that, and spend those in other places, using TIF to cover those expenses. The other thing I would say, too, is, is, for example, this morning at Redevelopment Commission, when we did the Honeysuckle Project, many of you were involved in the Honeysuckle Project, there was a $3 million, basically a payment early in taxes. We've used that $3 million to provide broadband services. We're building fiber out in the, the area between Lakeville, North Liberty, and Walkerton. So there are other toolsets that we can consider as we look at additional projects, where we could take money from one area and apply it to other areas. So there is a value to looking at economic development projects in a bigger, more, more holistic way across the county as we look at some of these future tax deficiencies as we go forward.
Thank you. Mr. Shalio, one of the things I like about this bill is it has language that allows us to look at smaller businesses who maybe don't meet all the criteria, but maybe have a great product, it will be a great benefit for the community, and the council, economic development folks, we'll have an opportunity to work with those folks. Do you agree that the language is there to do that?
Yeah, I, I think the, the ordinance gives some flexibility. Mr. Ray mentioned a couple of tax abatements that we did that were smaller abatements. The, the one in particular is the one on McKinley. It, it didn't fit many of the normal norms, so to speak, but it, it created a project on a site that needed redeveloped, that was in a developing corridor, so there were some benefits to that project. So as we looked under the existing ordinance, some ways that we could get that project to move. Again, we might not do that again. That was kind of a case-by-case use of the ordinance. That's what this new ordinance allows us to do, is do kind of a case-by-case review of projects and, and determine if it's a tool we use, or, or find another way to have a project move. But I do think there's some flexibility. Again, like all new ordinances, we're going to have to work our way through it and figure out what it is and how it works, and, and move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Shalio. Any other questions? Sure. Thanks. Go ahead.
I don't believe I have any questions for you, Mr. Shalio.
Thank you, Mr. Shalio. Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just referring to a few of the things that were mentioned during public hearing, affirmative action was removed by a majority of the council this summer from the tax abatement ordinance. I, I don't believe there was ever a promise to bring affirmative action back, though there was an expectation that we were going to ensure equality in reporting as it relates to equal opportunity to the ordinance. That's been done. Not to mention that all of the sections that used to, before it was revoked, all of the sections that referred to affirmative action or anything related to it are part of what was removed from the ordinance to simplify it from 24 pages to nine, to make it more small business friendly. The average salary requirement follows and brings our ordinance in line with Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-17, which sets abatement schedules and provides the guidelines in which we must follow, which only contemplates average salary requirements. I would love for there to be a minimum salary. I would love to use a median salary measurement. State law doesn't permit us to use that as a consideration for the approval of an abatement. Not to mention the fact that ALIS requirements were a livable wage, asset limited, income constrained, employed, the working poor, was used as a measure for what that percentage of average salary can and should be. 125% of the average county wage right now, that average county wage is $59,000 a year. 125% of that is around $74,000 a year, and that is the livable wage that one earner, that we're requiring, just one earner, supports a household of two adults, one infant, and one preschooler. I think we're meeting that threshold of those receiving a tax abatement as an incentive to start or expand business in our community is paying a livable wage. We have been judicious in the use of this. We have coordinated with our economic development team to ensure that this is an administrable update and amendment to our tax abatement ordinance. They have discussed with the contractors, subcontractors, laborers, and tradespeople on these massive projects to ensure that, that 50%, that majority threshold that we set, is achievable and reasonable. The $2 million personal property threshold that people have stayed, and, and I don't blame anybody who is not an expert on this, but SEA 1 upended everything for us with the state. A $2 million tax abatement threshold is the minimum threshold, because with SEA 1, as of January 1 next year, anybody with personal property of less than $2 million, it's already abated. They're not going to be taxed on it. They're exempt already. So if you're, if you've got equipment or otherwise that is worth less than $2 million in the process of operating your business, as of January 1, you're going to be exempt already. So it's a very reasonable threshold. It's the lowest threshold that we could set for personal property tax or personal property assessment to consider a tax abatement for. Again, that's, that's nuanced, because not everybody's an expert in, in Center Enrolled Act 1, but there are some people who talk to, I think, could've or should've known better. Yes, the federal government is, in some people's opinion, a little bit unstable right now. There are certain departments that are changing names, changing how they're reporting things, but right now, we've got the Bureau of Labor Statistics information that's been cycled monthly. At a minimum, we're probably going to have that available to us annually, because we depend on those statistics to operate so many different facets of our government, locally, statewide, and federally. Not to mention that the statistics that were used previously, not in the previous draft of this, not only the previous draft of this, but in the existing ordinance, are still federal programs. The Census and the American Community Survey is still a federal program. So nobody's offered a, a better alternative, and this is, this is coming from shared experts on the matter who, who say that this is a, a good tool to apply. I know there's frustration from those who've worked on the ordinance as it exists today, or at least prior to the way it existed in July, whenever the affirmative action language got removed. I, I sympathize with that. A lot of community effort went into that. I don't take that for granted. Prior to my time on the council and since my time on the council, there's not been a single abatement approved that has followed that scoring system. So if it exists and not to be used, then why does it exist at all? And if there's exceptions to the rule for the massive operators like the Amazons or the GMs, because they can navigate that process, but the small companies cannot, then that's a barrier to those small operators from accessing this resource to expand their investment in our community, in the jobs that they create, and the households that they support. So I, I'm really sorry that you point through that effort, and I wish it would have been exercised consistently over that time. And I know that I've been a vote in favor of a couple of abatements that have ignored that, but no different than any other vote that's occurred since or before. And if it's not going to be followed, then it is that artificial barrier for others being able to use it. I, I just want to provide that background as to why some of the concerns may not be as valid as they sound. A $2 million threshold is the smallest threshold. 125% of the average wage is a living wage for a family of four, even if you only have one earner. It's not a great wage. I'm not saying you're living in the lap of luxury, but you can survive and you have other options available to you, too. And those companies are not asking the community for further assistance for those employees that they hire.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you.
Any other council comments at this moment in time? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
Mr. Shetzel.
Mr. Katanzrite.
Make a motion that we pass Bill 6025 as amended?
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Katanzrite, seconded by Mr. Tanner, to pass Bill Number 60-25 as amended. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Shabazz?
Yes.
Mrs. Drake?
No.
Mrs., Mr. Rutten?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Katanzrite?
Yes.
Mr. Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Fig?
No.
President Shetzel?
Yes.
Bill passes 5-4.
Let the record show that Bill Number 60-25 was passed by a vote of 5 to 4. We now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none, we move on to new business.
Mr. Shetzel.
Mr. Katanzrite.
I have a couple of questions. I see him still in the audience. Mr. Shalio would make his way up regarding the recent Redevelopment Commission meeting. Mr. Shalio, at your October 14th Redevelopment Commission meeting, there was an appropriation made for additional traffic enforcement in the IEC. As it was explained, that there was a need for additional funds because we had expended the funds that we thought were going to last a total of two years. Do you anticipate come January, that, and the appropriation you asked for, was it $80,000 roughly?
It was, that's correct, yes.
That'll get us through until January?
I, I think it's set to go through at the end of the year or until those funds run out.
Okay. Through, through the end of this year or until those funds run out?
Yes, that's correct.
What's the plan for next year?
So I think there's a, a couple of different strategies. We're in the process right now of negotiating a road agreement with AWS. That road agreement covers the hard infrastructure that still needs to be built, some of the roads, some of the other infrastructure, not including the stuff that's underground. So the, some of the thought is, we've had conversations with AWS about adding some additional police safety enforcement into that. We're also working with the state as they look at the interchange project and start working on that, because the state's going to have a larger presence at the intersection of Two and Larison on that project, as well as four other intersections, Two and Timothy, Two and Tulip, 20 and Tulip, and 20 and Smilax, working more with state enforcement in that area as state projects are happening. State was pretty good to pass the, the enforcement over to St. Joe County Police. We'd like to send some of that back. So we think there's an opportunity to have the state police pick up a little bit more in that area. We'll have to see as, as time goes on, if we will still have a responsibility to that, or if the state will pick up more of that. And then really, the third option is that we have to continue to do additional enforcement. We'll, we'll have to use TIF as, as the tool to do that. That would be kind of the last alternative, but if that's what we need to do to keep the public safe, we will certainly do that. I would note that the $120,000 that was in the community enhancement agreement was put together in coordination with engineering and the police department. There was an estimate on how many hours we would need per day, per week, and that number was figured out at 60,000 for the first year and 60,000 for the second year. Obviously, with the amount of construction workers and the activity that happened and the amount of areas that we needed to cover. First, we had a lot of local roads kind of internal to the site. One of the things that we spent a lot of time doing, because we have Edison Road closed, it really has hampered ways in and out of the green facility. It's not gambling green anymore, but that firm there, so we've had to spend a lot of time at 20 and Walnut, doing some enforcement, additional enforcement as it relates to school buses and school buses along the whole corridor. So there's been a lot of enforcement that we've had to move around through that area. Now, we heard today by a qualified source that traffic is down on State Road 2. It's easy to drive in that corridor now, so maybe some of the enforcement we're doing in other areas will lessen.
Filmore Road off of Tulip, that people are using that as a cut-through and things such as that, and Filmore is obviously not an improved road. So the road agreement you're contemplating with AWS or any other parties, is that going to cover some of this, your anticipation?
Yeah.
Or is that more road improvement versus enforcement?
Well, so in the community enhancement agreement, we had enforcement. We believe that there's going to be some flexibility to put enforcement in this road agreement also as a secondary tool as part of the partnership with AWS. That was the one agreement. You know, back when we did the agreements, if you looked at the community enhancement agreement, there was a line that said, "Road agreement to be determined," and that's, we're in the process right now. Now that we're, we got pipes in the ground, we got water in, we got sewer in, all those pieces in, now we're going to put a road on top of it, and that was something that we always knew we'd have to come back and negotiate, and that's part of that, so.
When do you think that negotiation might be done?
I mean, we'd like to have it done by the end of the year because we have projects that are waiting to go out to bid until we have revenue to cover those costs.
So you will, in addition to, I'm assuming, costs of road improvements, you will be negotiating then for enforcement, or attempting to?
Yeah, there's some other things that'll go into that agreement. For example, the town, and I see some of the town representatives here today, so you know, if necessary, they can certainly speak on it. There's been a lot of locating services that they're required to do on a daily basis, and so we, the redevelopment commission, have covered some of those costs. It's anticipated that those costs will be transferred onto AWS as part of future agreement. Those costs are quite excessive with the amount of locating that has to be done just for the town, but also the other utilities that are on that corridor. So the more water pipe and other pipes put in the ground, that causes locate services that have to be done, so. So that's one of the other elements that likely will go into that road agreement as we move forward.
Okay. I think that answers my question. And you've got plenty of funds, we have plenty of funds in the TIF in order to pay for this if the agreement couldn't be reached in terms of enforcement?
For the police enforcement, we'll find a way to get those covered. I think early on, there was some money that the council gave as kind of a short-term gap before the AWS money came in, and then AWS money covered a period of time, and that went pretty quickly, but there was a lot of need for it. And again, we're going to cover it as it needs to be covered. We want to keep people safe in that corridor, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katanzerite. Ms. Drake, you spoke next.
Yeah, I wanted if we could get some clarification of the rules and procedures, especially surrounding the petitioner's postponement of the data center vote. Just some simple questions so that the public feels like the process is transparent and so that we understand if it was transparent. So when the petitioner asked it to be removed, or at least postponed, are they allowed to both? I don't know if you can answer these, Pete. I don't know how familiar you are with the rules.
I did download them, but go ahead.
So, and Mr. Shetzel, correct me if I'm not getting it right, but so the petitioner asked you to remove the item from?
Petitioner submitted a written request, and it has been, at least the policy on this council, as long as I've been on the council, the petitioner submits a written request and asking for a delay, that we grant that delay.
And so in the rules, it says that you may, they may withdraw it. So I just, I guess I questioned if withdraw and delay is the same thing. You know, it's a little bit different.
It's withdrawn until the next month.
Because withdraw can mean removing entirely, so I just wasn't sure. I don't know if you have any insight on that.
I think that I would analyze in a different way if there's a request to delay or postpone.
Can you use your mic?
I'm sorry. I would analyze in a different way. If there's a request to delay or postpone, and in this particular case, there's a limit on that because of the time sequence with when the vote from the, or a ruling from the Area Plan Commission takes effect, if you don't vote on this.
So it can't be delayed past December the 15th, because at that point, area plans vote would become the final vote?
Right, correct. But if you are, but if there's been a request to postpone it, and I would have to take a look at your new rules, but in the past, certainly, the president could postpone, or a, I don't remember if it was three or four votes, could postpone as well. Certainly, a majority could postpone.
Right.
But I think it was, it's within the power typically of the president to shift or postpone that vote.
Maybe we just need to?
And upon getting the written request, at least five members agreed to allow them to postpone, so we postponed.
Yeah.
May I ask how you alerted the other members? I guess one of our other concerns is that none of the council members actually knew that we were going to, it was going to be removed, so did you only communicate with some council members and not all?
It's actually not true. I did communicate with some council members, and once I had five, that was enough, so we postponed it.
I would think that just, I mean, good transparency.
Well, Ms. Drake, many of my communications to you go unanswered, so.
I'm not sure what you're speaking about, but I'm, in this particular reference?
I'm sure you do know what I'm speaking about.
In this particular reference, if we're going to pull something off of the agenda, it would be just common courtesy to let all members know.
Ms. Drake, we followed the same rules that Mr. Root followed when he was the president of this council. There were times when things were pulled off of the agenda where I had no idea they were going to be pulled off of the agenda. So I'm following the same rules that Mr. Root followed.
I would just ask, in the future, just for transparency, I think it's a simple thing to just notify everybody so we're aware, because if you don't notify us and we don't happen to realize that it's off the agenda, then we're ignorant of what's happening. I mean, it's a simple thing I think we could do just to be more transparent. And then, the last thing I wanted to ask, is this, and this is another question, I don't know if anybody knows this specifically, but it says here, "A period of six months must lapse before a proposed ordinance that has been defeated by council action can be reintroduced." So my question is, if for some reason we don't defeat this because it doesn't come up for a vote, do we still wait, do they, can they still bring it up? Do they have to wait six months, or does that rule not apply if we don't vote?
My interpretation is that that would be a failure of that, and so they'd have to wait to six months.
You think it would?
Yeah.
Ms. Pete, if the Area Plan Commission also has rules of certain time limits, those would have to be met as well. That's an if. I'm not asking you to refer to those rules, but if they have time limits, those would also apply.
Right.
And if I could, if it's okay for me to respond to your previous question with relation to this, with relation to the postponement. Dan did ask me if we did have a policy defined in our rules about a tabling or a postponement of a vote on written request of the petitioner. I told him, no, it is not explicitly defined. We do have very explicit directions based on the process of withdrawal, and that process of withdrawal mirrored standard practices that we've exercised in the past for similar requests for a postponement. In the absence of the defined rules, it's at the chair's discretion per what Pete mentioned. At the same time, I acknowledged that it was a sensitive issue, and in communication with the economic development team, suggested that a social media post going out to the public would be advisable so that people were not wasting their time showing up to a meeting for a vote that they expected to be on the agenda, but was not.
I'm glad that you brought that up because I actually had sent you an email, actually the whole council, an email asking how this press release or public announcement, however you want to refer to it, went out, because it appears that it's written by the whole council. And again, most of us were not notified of this, and it also includes opinions, so that it sounds like the whole council has this view, and I don't necessarily agree with all the views in here. So in the future, if that happens, I would appreciate if we could at least say who is putting the remarks out, like this is from Brian Tanner or Mr. Shetzel, so that everybody is very clear who's making these comments, because it does not reflect me, and I know it doesn't reflect all the members on this council.
First of all, Ms. Drake, most of the council did know. Secondly, I read the email also, and it does not, it does not read that it came from you or any group of the council. It came, it read to me as if it came from, you know? But point of order. Mr. Tanner. Point of order, then that came out, the whole council, that didn't represent, is that email was put on Facebook as if the whole council, and I was never notified, so.
If I could clarify?
Mr. Tanner, go ahead.
I, A, I didn't necessarily know that other members of the council had been communicated with whatsoever.
No, I wasn't.
Nor was it communicated to me, or I think anybody else on the council, including Mr. Shetzel, that when the county staff outside of the council's staff, somebody else in county staff posted that, they used some logo that represented as if it were a statement from the council. It used a logo or an icon that mentioned the St. Joseph County Council. That was unbeknownst to me. It was a surprise to me. I don't know who posted it. I don't know why they posted it to infer that that was a statement of the council, by the council, representative of the entire council.
All right. The first time I saw it was on your Facebook post.
My share of it.
Yeah.
I think even if it didn't have this council emblem stating it was by the county council, it still is implied that the county council put this out by it. I mean, we don't want kings in this county. We want a democracy, and I think that we need to make sure that every member is represented, and it's very clear who is making these comments.
Conspiracies around every corner. Did you want to say something? I wanted to talk to Mr. Shalio again, to shift gears here. Sorry, Bill.
I would say, just for a point of clarification, our office, one of our, one of our staff members was the one that was posted, does all the social media posting, so if it came out with the council logo, then if it came out with a council logo, I, we'll talk about that internal, that in the future, we either use the general county logo or whatever. That was the first I've heard of this being an issue, so, but we could have corrected that well before tonight had we been alerted to that. Mr. Thomas, you had a question? I'm sorry, council?
Thank you.
Thomas, you had a question?
Lost my train of thought.
Oh.
On the, the police out there, you know, obviously with all the traffic, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, when I go out there and I see a squad car out there, I know this is in your purview, but when I see a police car out there with a light sign, it's a totally, it's kind of different out there at Two and Larison, Timothy, et cetera. It's nice, and everyone's slowing down. As soon as the police car is gone, it's, you know, classic, right? It's kind of crazy. I know with this funding, the RDC can appropriate, I think is extremely important to have that police presence out there, and I know we all hear about it. I get the emails, we all get the emails, you get them, about the, how horrible and dangerous it is out there with all that construction traffic. I just want to encourage redevelopment to really put the funding towards the police so they can handle the overtime, so the sheriff's department doesn't come back towards us for more money. I know, I know we, Amazon gave the community enhancements, and I know we're going to be going through that, but it's obvious we need more funding to have the proper police protection out there on the roads.
Yeah, and I would, I would, I see Steve Noonan's logo, I mean, based on the logo that Steve is on the call. You know, they've been, they've been a great partner through this whole process, and again, have been very flexible enforcing different areas based on complaints and comments and concerns and things like that. We will continue to be a partner as we need to throughout the process.
So when you say the state enforcement, and are they handing that off to the county, you said?
Well, it's, State Road 2 is a state road, and typically, state roads are enforced by the state. However, there's a certain level of county enforcement, and the town probably does enforcement along the State Road 2 corridor when and how they need, same with US 20. Again, because the state will take a more active role in the IEC with these improvement projects, we would hope that they would step up and do a little bit more with enforcement. They, like everybody else, short-staffed, and so I'm sure they'll do what they can do and defer to the county where they need additional support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shalio. Mr. Thomas?
I'm sorry. Can I ask?
No worries.
Mr. Noonan? Just what I said, if he's on, maybe he's been on for so long, he probably shut me off. Are you there, Major Noonan?
I am still here, yes. We do have, you know, the patrols we have, and everything has gone well. With the construction ramping down, it has become better. Obviously, Monday, we had, or Monday morning, we had a lot of slide outs, but I think things are going well out there. So, you know, they, the extra patrols do help, so we don't tire West car up there the whole time.
And I appreciate that, I really do, and seeing that presence is huge. I've been kind of yelling from the mountaintop on State Road 2 with putting some temporary stoplights out there, and I know it's just coming from me, but just to slow them down, and, but that's a state road, as Mr. Shalio said, and so that's up to them. But they've, they've kind of shot me down on that, but it is big. When I go out there and I see squad cars out there with their lights, man, they slow down, and it's not a free-for-all. When they're gone, and if we could just keep on getting funding from redevelopment to help you, because you, then you're going to be coming knocking on our door, and redevelopment sounds like they're going to hopefully be able to handle that, that funding. Do you agree with that, Steve? And/or the developer, both, yeah?
No, I do. We're here funded through the rest of the year, so we're good there, but obviously, going forward, we'll have to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to old business, any old business. Seeing none, we move on to privilege of the floor. Please listen carefully to the following announcement. The public is invited to address the council on any item that was not on tonight's agenda. A time limit of three minutes shall be enforced for those wishing to speak during privilege of the floor. Before you speak, please sign in and then give your name and address for the record. Individuals may speak only once during this section of the agenda. Please use appropriate language and volume when addressing the council. Also, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council. Please refrain from directing your remarks to other members of the public who are in attendance tonight. Violations of these instructions could result in the forfeiture of your remaining time. Finally, the council does not normally respond to questions or comments posed during privilege of the floor. I would like to remind council members that if you choose to respond to questions or comments made by a member of the public, they have the right to respond in turn. And with that, we would like to hear from our first guest. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak during privilege of the floor?
Hello, I'm Marcy Kaufman, New Carlyle Town Council President, 124 East Michigan Street, New Carlyle. On behalf of the New Carlyle Town Council, I'm here to reiterate the clear desire of the New Carlyle community against Bill Number 42-25, which is the rezoning of over 1,000 acres of farmland from agriculture to industrial, and the subsequent building of another data center north of and adjacent to New Carlyle. On October 21st, 2025, the New Carlyle Town Council adopted Resolution Number 10-21-1 that conveyed just a few of the arguments against this rezoning. Among those arguments are, one, the adoption of the New Carlyle Comprehensive Plan in June of 2024 that clearly indicates not only the intent and desire for the farmland north of New Carlyle to remain as some sort of agriculture use, but it also clearly depicts the core area of the IEC where all industry is supposed to reside. Two, the adoption of the St. Joseph County Comprehensive Plan, Plan SJC, in November of 2024, that also reflects the intent for agriculture north of New Carlyle. It's understood that a comprehensive plan is a guide or a roadmap and not the final decision in land use. However, to have two-year-old comprehensive plans undergo such an intense and huge diversion from what is stated is extremely egregious. Both of these important documents cost tens of thousands of dollars and countless hours by many members of our community. They were also created in the spirit of good faith that we had some, that we had some say, we felt that we had some say in the trajectory of our town and community. Passing Bill 42-25 would erase all that and greatly reduce the trust in county leadership. For all of you who have shown us your support in defeating this rezoning, thank you so very much. We look forward to your support. We look forward to your vote on December 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Carol Bonsignore. I live at 304 East Michigan Street in New Carlyle. I'm right on the corner of Timothy and Michigan. And I'd like to also speak on the rezoning of the 1,057 acres. And I can appreciate the difficulty of this decision. I understand about the tax revenue of the jobs and the money that might be allocated to improving our infrastructure. However, I think there is overwhelming negative impact on this decision when we look at water usage, electrical usage, the noise, potential noise pollution, light pollution, aesthetics. But what I wanted to speak on, and this kind of dovetails on something that somebody else was talking about, was traffic. And so I kind of, and, and we'll have the police officer decide if I did this correctly or not, but I looked at the police logs for October 2024 and compared the police logs for the county for 2025. And if you want copies of what I found, so I looked, this took about four hours because there's lots of logs for both those months. But traffic stops, when you looked at October 2024 compared to October 2025, there were three traffic stops in 2024 and 118 in 2025. When we looked at traffic complaints or hazards, there were nine in '24, there were eight. So that really didn't change in 2025. Traffic accidents went from three to 16 over that period of time. As a, as somebody who lives in that area, I can say that this has been a dramatic decline in our quality of life around that area. The trucks, I used to worry, because where my house is located, it's right next to the train tracks. So I used to have to step in sometimes when the trains were going by. Now I step in the house to talk when the trucks are going by. It really has impacted a lot of our lives for those of us who live in New Carlyle. And those county roads were never made for this kind of impact of the construction work and traffic that we're seeing. So that's my comments. I'll close. Thank you.
Carol, could you, your last name one more time?
Oh, sorry. It's Bonsignore, B-O-N-S-I-G-N-O-R-E.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if you want a copy of this, it's here. Thank you.
My name is Marcia Kern. I live at 413 West Michigan Street in New Carlyle. I'm a fifth-generation resident and small business owner in New Carlyle. And I've been attending the meetings regarding the rezoning of the farmland for the proposed data center. I'm left with many questions and concerns, but for me, excuse me, the elephant in the room is water. During the Area Plan Commission meeting on September 16th, the presentation given for the petitioners gave no mention of water. Only after the presentation, when the commissioners were allowed to ask questions, was the issue of water addressed. Mr. Dickinson deferred to a civil engineer who offered no really useful information regarding water system designs or usage. During the presentation to the Land Use Committee on October 28th, there was again no discussion of water until asked questions by council members. We've been given plenty of information on setbacks, lighting at the facility, and even the proposed landscaping with native plants and trees. But the omission of water, the most precious resource on planet Earth, being addressed as an afterthought or a negotiating tool is troubling. Mr. Dickinson did mention that a closed-loop water system design may be negotiable. As a layperson trying to educate myself about our aquifer, its capacity, and how it can be safely utilized in the IEC, information is difficult to ascertain. Much of the information is proprietary and in some cases seems unknown. This aquifer is the lifeblood of our communities, yet I feel as if we're not privy to information regarding its usage and safety. Mr. Dickinson also mentioned that other counties would die for the infrastructure available here. I have no doubt this is true, which leads me to urge the council to use its leverage to be highly selective in its approval of economic development projects in the IEC. And also to honor the unanimous decision of the Area Plan Commission, to honor the decision of the Land Use Committee, to respect the boundaries of the IEC, to respect and utilize the comprehensive plans of both the county and the town of New Carlyle. And finally, to respect the unanimous decision passed by the town of New Carlyle, to reject the rezoning for the purposes of this data center. Because at the end of the day, we, the residents of New Carlyle and all of township, have to live with the results of the decisions you make for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kern.
Good evening. My name is Ben Dallas. I live in Mishawaka. You got my address where I signed in. Tonight, I come before the county council with the demand the councilman, the councilman from District I, Andy Rutten, resign in disgrace. Why, you ask? Because as a sitting councilman, as a sitting councilman, he leveraged his position within the Republican Party to influence others to fund lawfare against people who speak up against his lies, his hypocrisies, and his voting record. What are some of those lies? Well, we can start with his name. His name tag in front of his desk tonight says Andy Rutten, which is exactly what the people of District I thought his name was when they unknowingly voted for this fraud. The fact is, Andy is a fake name. His real name is Anthony. He doesn't want his constituents to know that, because then it becomes awfully hard to lecture working people about the importance of fiscal responsibility. After, after, um, after they look him up on mycase.in.gov, they then see his legal record under his real name of Anthony Rutten. And then they find that he's, he has a litany of legal issues involving financial issues. Then, when they start to get even more curious, and they look at his election paperwork filing, they will, they will then find that he's unemployed, making it nearly impossible for him to lecture anyone about how the, how many, how tax dollars should be spent or used, or any, any, any relativity of fiscal responsibility, without being laughed at. So instead of explaining himself and being transparent as he campaigned on, he simply decided to take a shortcut and lie about his name. These are easy-to-find facts that I just mentioned that people can look up on their own. And don't take my word for it. Look, look it up for yourself. For this lie alone, he should, he should resign in disgrace.
Mr. Dallas?
Yes.
Can we move on from that point, please?
Sure thing. So, last weekend, this councilman was handing out a letter asking members of the Republican Party to, um, fight his battles for him and fund lawfare against myself and five other people who happened to speak out against his opinions politically. He actually labeled us as a cabal. I believe you were involved in that too, sir. So he labeled us as a cabal because we disagree with him. We're all people who've, who've done nothing more than speak out against lies, hypocrisy. Instead of taking accountability for these actions, he simply went with to use like Soviet-style censorship tactics to try to get us to be quiet. But, but, the constituents in District I deserve a councilman who doesn't lie about his name. Has a job, doesn't use lawfare to silence political opposition,
Mr. Dallas?
Doesn't approve.
Your time is up.
Well, Dave, that went fast.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Who's next?
Not by time, I'm the sacrificial lamb.
You're going to have to give us your name, sir. Sacrificial lamb is not good enough.
Okay, John Hamilton, 913 West Colfax.
Thank you.
As we contemplate sacrificing another thousand acres and more of prime farmland for yet another hyperscale data center campus, the newest form of industrialization, I suggest we concentrate on the big picture. Who actually will benefit from what our county decides to do on this issue? We, the people, have allowed ourselves to be dominated by oligarchs who have no interest whatever in our well-being. Four trillion-dollar companies, Apple, Microsoft, Alphabet, that is Google, and Amazon, controlled by their algorithms what we see here and presumably understand as we interact with the internet. An equally small number of giant companies lead, lead the drive to universal AI, Nvidia, Microsoft, Google, Amazon, and Meta Platforms, each valued in the trillions of dollars. OpenAI, the promoter of ChatGPT, in a series of convoluted multi-billion-dollar deals, is alone responsible for building a number of data center campuses. However, while it has accounted for over $1 trillion in AI infrastructure deals, it managed to lose some $11.5 billion in revenue over the last three months. In the last couple of days, Nobel Prize winner Geoffrey Hinton, known as the godfather of AI, spoke of AI's impact on future employment during an interview on Bloomberg. Asked whether trillion-dollar investments in AI could ever pay off without eviscerating the job market, Hinton said, quote, "I believe it can," close quote. He went on, "I believe that to make money, you're going to have to replace human labor." And in fact, layoffs due to AI are already happening in sectors across the economy. They include banking, the auto industry, even Walmart. Of the 159,000 layoffs reported at the end of October, fully 31,039 were caused by AI. By the way, in addition to destroying jobs formerly done by us humans, OpenAI is busily destroying humans themselves. OpenAI now faces at least seven lawsuits accusing its ChatGPT of actively helping at least four people commit suicide. Dependence on large companies can be costly, as we have just seen with the GMC battery plant's construction suddenly uncertain. What once was touted to produce 1,600 or more good jobs, now that plant, only partially constructed, has likely turned some 650 acres of what had been agricultural land into our latest brownfield. Maybe in four or more years, GMC's plant might actually employ 1,600, hopefully, human workers if the economy does not, in the meantime, blow up in an AI cryptocurrency bubble.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Ready? Okay.
Mr. Francis, please go ahead.
Okay, Steve Francis, Judy Lake Drive. Yeah, I would just want to respond to, um, Mr. Dickinson's excellent presentation, really, at the committee meeting two weeks ago. But since we don't have an opportunity to respond one-to-one to that, I've, I've asked that that be a possibility because the city allows that. But in the county, you will vote on a recommendation without hearing any other sources or sides to the story in the committee meeting. And before, and I didn't know that this was going to be delayed, but, and I won't speak to that, but to the public, I have to say, it did look like that message came entirely from the council. And I think that's unfair to members who probably didn't even hear about the delay and/or didn't participate in it. If there were five votes, I don't know how they were undertaken. But it, you know, when I looked at the rules, withdraw means withdraw. So I assumed that that might have meant that they were withdrawing their petition, not delaying it. However, I'll accept what would happen. We were planning on having a lot of people come tonight. This was first introduced in April. That's when you got the first reading. It was delay after delay at the Area Plan Commission for six months. Finally, the Area Plan Commission heard the presentation and passed it on with an unfavorable recommendation in, I think, September, August or September. It was delayed in your committee hearing when Mr. Katanzright offered that opportunity to the petitioner for another month. And now it's been delayed again. And I just say to the public, that's a very frustrating process as we try to assemble the public into a way in which you can hear the complaints, and I think you're hearing more tonight. I want to respond to Mr. Dickinson's comments. First of all, the economic director said that this land was within the IEC. It is not. I think several of you understood that that day. I want to make it clear to the public that this land being asked for rezoning is not in the Indiana Enterprise Center. It's, it's outside of that. It's outside of the ADA. It's outside of the TIF. Secondly, he also started throwing out lots of things that we never heard at the APC. Oh, things they're willing to do. Closed-loop water systems, separation from the land, setbacks, screening. That never came up in the APC. It's only come up when he's realized that there's significant opposition in the community out in New Carlyle and frankly, all around the county. I want these in written commitments before you decide on a rezoning. If you rezone it and say, okay, we'll accept your promises and get the written commitments later, I think that's just not a very good process from a legal standpoint. So we don't have those commitments. I think those commitments should be released to the public at least two weeks in advance. I have more, but I'll bring those up in December. I do want to wish you all, frankly, a happy Thanksgiving. Give me liberty to do so, because you're going to need to have some rest and recuperation before you come back on December 9th. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Hello, my name's Haley Neisel of it 443 Ballard Avenue in Mishawaka. And I wanted to come to you today as an electrical engineer who lives in this county. I am concerned about these data centers, and I'm concerned because it's not just our county. If you look at the Citizen Action Coalition's website, they have a section on data centers, and it is basically all of the cankey key. So when you make these decisions, you are not just making them based on our county alone. And I know, we have such a prolific aquifer, but the more projects you stack on top of each other, the more likely you're going to drain the aquifer. And any new generation for these plants will be about a decade out. So you're going to probably contribute to rolling blackouts in the meantime and increasing everyone's utility bills. So, yeah, I want to ask you to vote no on the rezoning and maybe do an independent environmental impact study. And then, um, these projects need to be way more transparent. Stop letting big corporations keep their names out of the press, because that is how they rob us of our resources and our land. And then, um, I would like to ask that people not be afraid to lose campaign funding. That should not be the reason you vote yes on rezoning. That is all.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emily Goldman. I live at 523 Lincoln Way East, Mishawak, Indiana. I would also like to speak on the rezoning of the farmland in New Carlyle. I myself, as a mechanical engineer, my education informs my position that I too am adamantly opposed to that project. Specifically, I think it's very unconvincing, the closed-loop water cooling system that has just now been proposed after, as was mentioned earlier, significant pushback. We know that that technology is in its infancy, is being currently developed at several research labs, the most successful being at Colorado State University, a region with water that is not hard like ours. It is unproven technology. There's no guarantee that this so-called closed-loop system is going to be a solution to the aquifer concerns. We already are pulling 5 million gallons at the maximum, a limit that Amazon is currently allowed to pull. But given our lack of transparency and trust with my generation and others, with tech companies, I kind of don't give, um, I don't give a crap what a tech company says. I don't trust them in my community. That is also not to say the least about the chemicals used in these cooled water, closed-loop cooling systems are toxic. They are not easy to dispose of. What's the disposal plan for those chemicals? How are we going to get those out of New Carlyle safely? You're basically going to be installing a chemical bomb in New Carlyle on one side and an entire industrial park on the other side. So, yeah, I am not a polite person. Fuck data centers.
Ms. Goldman, we do have rules. We ask you to abide by those rules next time you speak. Or you can give up the right to speak. That's your choice.
I'm not speaking.
I'm speaking of next time you come, ma'am. Sir? Sir?
Joseph Cooper, 321 West 13th Street, Mishawaka. The aquifer issue is not insignificant as well as the other utilities. Studies have been done to show the overall impact of data centers in municipalities. And in those municipalities where they've had a history for the last three or four years, utility bills have gone up three to four hundred percent. If you think that building any type of data center is not going to have a long-term impact on data, on energy costs as well as aquifer, then you are being blinded by lobbyists. The fact is, the aquifer is fixed. It takes a long time to replenish water at the level that you're drawing it out to cool anything, whether it's a data center or even just industrial, normal industrial uses or household uses. When utility bills are calculated, they're not separating out, here's the data center bill, and then everybody else gets to pay what they were paying. It's all blended together, especially if you're drawing electricity interstate, which is going to have to happen to provide enough electricity for the data center there, the battery operations up in, on, in Mishawaka. You're going to end up drawing. And when you do draw down the aquifer, even in New Carlyle, all the farmers that are still trying to grow their crops there are going to find their wells drying up. And you've already heard a couple of cases where water, farm water wells are drying up and they need to tap deeper. So any type of additional data centers in this area should be given the opportunity to go to another community, preferably in the south. Far away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Mark Anella. I live at 1010 Quimby Street. And I am just a guy who doesn't want more data centers in this area. I don't want to pay for the data centers through my utility bills. Our neighbors over in La Porte County have already seen like super-high utility rates this last year. So it's kind of like, they're kind of the canary in the coal mine for this. We don't want to do the same stuff. I really appreciate that all of you are considering the consequences of data centers in all of the other things that were being discussed tonight, because obviously, there's a lot of legislation that's going to have consequences about whether or not more data centers come here, like the, this Meta one and the proposed Microsoft one for later. I hope that everybody does everything in your limited power to not let any more tech companies come take our resources. I live at 1010 Quimby. I live in what's basically the armpit of a post-industrial mistake. The overpass of Sample &amp; Eddy was built for industry, was built for Studebaker. And it was a project that was finished after Studebaker was gone. So I mean, if we're going to be putting our resources and our, and our tax abatements into these, I mean, it's a boom and bust economy. It's a gamble. And we're stuck with the overpass, that nobody, the clover that nobody wants. It's going to be expensive to change it. We're stuck with Drewers Brewery, Drewery's Brewery, whatever that is. Who knows what that is? It's a cesspool. And we have to deal with it now. So these big projects are just going to be scars on our land that we are going to be paying for. I'm just a guy who works part-time and pays my mortgage and pays my utility bills. Citizens Action Coalition said that, on average, bills across the state of Indiana are going up by forty-two dollars this year. Thankfully, mine hasn't gone up by forty-two dollars yet. But I'm worried that it will if more data centers keep coming. So I already hate that the Amazon one is here. Please don't let any more come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anella. Is there anyone else? Oh, please.
Mike McMahon is 51940 Lilac Road. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Fig for his statement before that if he had a chance now to revote on, on the Amazon project and the abatement, he would vote differently. I think that serves as a great example to the responsibility that all of you have and the hard thinking and the hard work that you're going to have to do. As you've seen, there's a lot of tension about the upcoming data center. And the tension that exists there is, one, do we want something that a lot of people believe will destroy our resources? And two, you also, as the fiscal body, have a responsibility to make sure that we have the sufficient money to pay our police at the level that we are now and the number that we have now, pay our fire department at that level, and maintain all of the other governmental projects that the citizens of this county deserve and are enjoying now. So this meeting, to me, has been very, almost inspirational that we've had so much discussion and that we've received so much information, because you've got some really, really difficult choices in front of you. And I just wish you the best of luck in making those. Go slow. That's why I asked before about the portage manner issue. Take your time. Get as much information as possible. Even though the Amazon deal was done, what, two years ago? We're still talking about negotiations to pay for the Amazon deal. So let's try and think of all of the things we need to think about now before we get ourselves in another mess, either a fiscal mess or an environmental mess. And by the way, just as a little, I had no idea you were going to bring up Amazon tonight, Mr. Fig. But Amazon makes two-hundred-and-ten million dollars in profit every single day. And Amazon's revenue is one-point-nine-six billion dollars every single day. So as we go forward with the next negotiation with Amazon of the continuing saga, let's keep that in mind. Make them pay for the enforcement.
Mr. McMahon, your time is up.
Thank you. And then pay for the roads. Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Duncan, Mishawaka. I want to point out to you that the companies that want to build data centers in our county hire the most brilliant engineers in the world. They operate with budgets that are the envy of every industry in the world. They have a lot, but you hold something that they want, and that is the resources to build more data centers. Let me just pause to note that anything you hear about maybe it being an AI bubble is not the case. It's not a bubble. It's huge, and it's going to grow at the, at the rate that it's been growing. So you have the opportunity to be wise to say, you know what? We have not infinite resources. Even if we have a great aquifer, it's not infinite. But you guys have a lot of money and a lot of brains, and so we can give you caps. We can tell you how much of our resources you can use. And after that, you're going to have to use your genius engineering skills to figure out how to use less energy or use less water in order to do all the work that you need to do. They've been developing technologies to do these things straight along. You've watched computers your whole lives get smaller and smaller and smaller as they get more and more powerful, consume less and less energy as they do more and more work. Keep that in mind as you negotiate with your data centers. You hold the cards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan.
Good evening, Council. Dan Caruso, New Carlyle. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to thank Marcy Kaufman for what she said earlier. She went into specifically how many of us from the community spent many hours working on those comprehensive plans for both the county and the town. I worked on both, as did a number of my friends here. And it was sort of disappointing to find out that what we were doing was really kind of a waste of time, because it was seen as by economic development, and everybody kind of goes along with it saying, well, it's just a guide. It really doesn't mean anything. It's just a guide. What you guys would like, but it doesn't matter what you like, because it's just a guide, and we have these plans that go against what your guide wants. Our guide, the two plans, the county and the town, both designated this area as agritourism, green space, green, certainly not industrial. We have, so, so we say, okay, now we're stuck with this guide thing. We elect people, you all. And you see many people from your districts, not just New Carlyle, speaking about this tonight, who are impacted by this, who feel strongly about this. And we're, we're trying to convince you that this isn't what we, the members of this county want. It's not just New Carlyle. And we pay our taxes, most of us. We live in the county, and we vote. And we voted to have you folks sit up there to represent our best interests and to find out that the hard work we did with the comp plan was just a guide, that we can't expect you to act in our best interest for putting out that, here's our guide that we gave you guys. Please help us stick to it and then come up with reasons to not stick to it. SB one, it's become the problem of every, it's become everybody's problem. I believe John Murphy at the last council meeting, I believe it was at the committee meeting, when he was at, when the discussion of SB one came up, and John said, we'll be fine. I believe John Murphy. Thank you. Please do not support this rezoning or any other rezonings in New Carlyle and all of township. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caruso.
Richard Hall, 1301 Fairfax, South Bend. Yeah, I agree with many of the points that many of the speakers have addressed, such as our natural resources, our aquifer. I think that those are very good and valid points. One point that I would like to bring up is our infrastructure. As we are all aware of, as these data centers come in, they will require electricity, water, wastewater, fuel, et cetera. And we already see with many of the other data centers around the country and in the community the strain that they put on the municipal infrastructure. So with SB one, that has been discussed multiple times. It's already been estimated, and I'm sure that you're aware, that this is going to create an estimated one-point-eight billion-dollar budget shortfall across the state of Indiana. So I am perplexed as to how local cities, counties, and municipalities will keep their infrastructure going and also develop that infrastructure to support something like a data center. I work for utilities. I can't seem to understand it. If anyone in the council has an answer, how exactly are we supposed to provide that infrastructure, to maintain the infrastructure that we already have? One might argue that that infrastructure could use more money to develop it further. But how is it supposed to support that strain with no money coming in? Or less money than expected? Excuse me. Less money than expected, thanks to SB one. So just a question to pose to all of you. I, I don't seem to have an answer for it. Maybe someone else does. But it's looking kind of grim out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Is there anyone online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? I cannot see your name, sir. Upper left-hand corner. Can you tell me out there?
I can't see.
Okay. Gentlemen in the red tie, I can see your hand. I cannot see your name. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Brian Will, 52484 Hickory Road in Granger. And first, just wanted to thank the Area Planning Commission as well as the Land Use Committee members who recently voted to not recommend the proposed rezoning of land north of New Carlyle for yet another energy-guzzling data center, this time from a secret New York City-based entity which seeks to build on one of our community's most bucolic and historic areas, one of the few areas around where you can see the northern lights tonight. Ms. Kern mentioned there are multiple reasons to not approve the data center rezoning proposal when it comes up for a vote next month. For starters, the excessive electricity and water use, traffic congestion, destruction of the environment, noise and light pollution, cost of infrastructure, as was just mentioned, and our state's dependency on polluting coal and natural gas power plants. To add a bit to what Mr. Hamilton's well-researched comments mentioned, I'm not opposed to development, and I realize some projects have the potential for being good for the local economy and support important goals. For example, the GM Samsung electric vehicle battery plant in western St. Joe County. It's one of the biggest economic projects in the state's history, and if it is completed, would help our, our country compete with China in manufacturing and the sale of EVs that are so much in demand globally. I fear the EV plant's future isn't doubt since Congress sadly voted to revoke the EV tax credit incentives earlier this summer, including our own House of Representative members, Rudy Yackam, voted against these, these EV tax credits, which makes no sense to me because of the jobs involved here in our county. Back to the data center. Many Wall Street analysts have expressed concern that we may be in an AI bubble, meaning that the expenditures on data center infrastructure may far exceed expected revenue, and therefore, we may be approaching an overcapacity situation and possibly big losses from the highly leveraged companies building the hundreds, hundreds of data centers across the country are in the future. I ask that the county council please deny any more requests for data centers in the county until we see the impact of the already under-development Amazon and Microsoft projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will. Is there anyone else online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Mary?
Thank you, Mary Countryman, 52959 Timothy Road, New Carlyle. I wanted to speak on a few things that at the last meeting, the committee meeting and the prior meeting, when the 1,057-acre zoning was, rezoning was denied. I was sitting right next to one of the people, Mallory Brewer, that was in the audience, sitting right next to me. And when somebody made the comment during public comment that this is some of the best fertile prime farmland in the United States, it should be preserved for farmland. Mallory, and that was a very true statement. And Mallory was shaking her head, and she was mumbling, yes, it is. That is great, great prime farmland. She was right. Well, then, I find it odd that the man that wants to change that from farmland to industry, Mr. Saporsky made a comment about that it's very poor soil. I feel as if you have been lied to. At the committee meeting, I feel like you've been lied to, because I can tell you right now, seed corn companies will not plant, will not contract with a farmer to grow their seed corn, which that, that is the corn that gets that is the corn that gets shipped all over to grow more seed and grow more corn. They will not contract with a farmer to plant their seed to produce more seed corn on poor soil. And a portion, a, a good portion of Saporsky's field was indeed seed corn. There was also soybeans on it. But I feel like you've been lied to, and that's just been bothering me ever since. And I also want to bring up the fact that there are several things that do not meet the regards to the comprehensive plan. This, this doesn't meet our comprehensive plan for planning and for our local area. It does not meet the current conditions and character of, the current conditions and character of current structures and uses in each district. Quite a while back, when I called Sean Klein and I said, but Sean, I said, why do you want to rezon this? It shouldn't be rezoned because I said, you have used as justification in previous arguments that the land next to it is already industrial, so we should always, we should just rezon this, or the adjacent land is industrial, so we should rezon to industrial. Well, you know what? I said, Sean, all this area is agriculture, so it should stay agriculture. And he just kind of gave a little chuckle and laughed at me, but it does not go with the most desirable use for which that land should be used. And it is not responsible development. It is not responsible growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Countryman, is there anyone else online who would like to speak during privilege of the floor? Seeing none, I'd like to note that due to Thanksgiving, our next committee meeting will be November the 18th, and our next regular meeting will be December the 9th. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.